Dear Father, thank you for creating this opportunity to conduct business. Let our hearts be humble and selfish and in good faith. May you bless our thoughts and words that are in us. In Jesus' name we pray for this and for all the people who have been affected so horribly by this COVID-19 virus. We pray for the families that have lost bloodlines. We pray for the families that have sick ones. And we pray that nobody else is devastated by this disease. And we pray that our government and our lives can move back to their natural ending and procedure. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Andy Nakain, Ms. Liz Ebert. Thank you, guys. We welcome everyone to the council meeting. This is a little unusual, but everyone knows what's going on about the virus, so we doing our part as the city councilman. We welcome you to the city council meeting. As presiding officer and chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, call 337-291-8428. Prior to the reading of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. When calling, only give your name, a callback number, and the agenda item. Once the agenda item is read during the meeting, staff will call you back to speak in order that your request was received. Staff assistant is available if needed. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. All media video equipment must remain behind the red lines. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by robed rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, please call 291-8800. Announcement. The announcement that I have is SWLA, which is on the north side, they opened up a testing site for COVID-19 and is at 500 Patterson Street. So anyone interested in going for the testing, you guys can go out there. Or is there any announcement from the council? Ms. Cook?
Okay, thank you. If I can see when my glasses would stop fogging up, I'll basically make my little announcement here. First, I just wanted to thank the administration for the hard work that y'all been doing, for everything that y'all have done. The information sharing has been amazing, so I just wanted to publicly thank y'all for that. And I do, you know, we've talked about all the healthcare workers and how much we appreciate them. And I just wanted to also give a shout out to all the service workers in our city that are doing, you know, the job of keeping the city running. So I just, again, I wanted to give them a shout out as well and let them know how much we appreciate that. And my last thing is actually about a Healthy Kids Running Series, my running series, which is going virtual, so I just wanted to put that out there. This week, it's beginning, and so it's a virtual race. It's for the next five weeks. The kids, gives them an opportunity with their families to run, and they don't have to go to school, so they have lots of time. So they're basically run one race a week based on their age group, just like they would if they were coming to the actual event. So it's beginning this week. You can get more information on the HealthyKidsRunningSeries.org. And hopefully, you'll have some more participants, because this is also a project that is a community partner, because the funds that we raise from this are put back into the Lafayette Parish school systems, into the public school PE program. So again, we have been able to put almost $2,000 back into the system, so I'm hoping that we get enough people that sign up again, so we can keep that going. So again, Healthy Kids Running Series, we're going virtual. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Ebert?
Thank you, Chair. Mayor, this question is more of a question than an announcement. I know that we have started easing back into allowing people, businesses to open, and thank you for that. I did receive a question from a constituent this morning. We know it's gray area, so first, I'm hoping you can expand on the gray area businesses. And then, second, they sent me a screenshot, and it says Source is the office of the governor. And it says, as actual dates of Friday, April 24th, that gyms, barber shops, beauty salons, and nail care artists can open up. And then Monday, April 27th, private social clubs, restaurant dining, service and theaters can open up Monday. So I don't, they sent me this. I don't know where it's from. It just says Source Office of the Governor. It could have been made up. I don't know. So I didn't know if you knew of anything, so if you could share with everyone, first the gray areas and then that.
Yeah. Am I, am I? Okay, there I am. Okay, good. So the first issue, as far as those dates, I would ignore that at this particular time. I haven't heard that. We're still operating as if the governor's stay-at-home order will expire on April 30th until he expands it or extends it. It's my understanding, from a pure technical standpoint, I think he would have to issue a different emergency declaration proclamation due to time delays, but we'll defer to the governor on that. On that note, you know, the governor's office has been extremely helpful as far as interpreting his orders. There are 64 different parishes in our state, so you've got 64 different police juries and parish presidents and a countless number of mayors that are interpreting executive orders that are an executive order that we didn't issue. So that leads me into the second issue that you had asked about with these gray areas or these in-between businesses are. The best way that I can explain it, or that I interpret in my mind, is you really have, under the governor's, seven different emergency orders or proclamations. You really have three buckets of businesses. You have three different types, as right now in the state of Louisiana. You have one type of business that has been expressly prohibited. We know those businesses can operate, your hair salons, your health and fitness clubs, restaurants, to a certain degree, with the exception of, and I'm thankful for the governor to make an exception there for curbside and takeout and things like that. So you have those businesses, and I know there's a couple more, that have been expressly prohibited, can operate without certain exceptions. Then you have the other bucket of businesses that have been declared essential. And I think Councilman Nakain works at a business that has been declared essential construction, so we appreciate that. And they're operating under their own set of rules, under their own set of provisions, governed by Governor John Bill Edwards at this particular time. So then, we have this in-between, these in-between businesses. Now, according to Lita, in our parish, that will affect roughly 60% of our businesses, which is a large amount. So working in conjunction with the governor's office, interpreting his orders, working with GOSEP at the state level, we were able to, and very happy to announce the first parish in the state to do this, to initiate what we call the Safe Shop Initiatives. And any businesses out there, if you're watching, if you have questions as far as, or need some help in getting compliant, and we have some rules for these Safe Shop businesses, their employees must wear masks, you must have six-foot social distancing, and your maximum capacity is 25%. Now, as far as the social distancing and the 25% capacity, these businesses must have mechanisms in place to actually enforce that, and we're not just, you know, checking all the block there, actually doing it. And thank you to our Lafayette Police Department. We have Chief Morgan in the back, and we have someone from our fire department as well here. And thank you to our firemen, and our mayors, and our chiefs of police, chiefs of fire, our sheriff. We're all on the same base. This was a unified front. I don't know if you watched one of our press conferences the other day when we announced the Safe Shop Initiatives, and noticed it was unified. There was not, we all collectively, with the mayors, got together, our sheriff, all our chiefs, police chiefs of fire, our own chief of police, chief of fire, and we came up with these provisions, along with our getting medical advice as well. And again, 60% of the businesses apply to this. So those Safe Shop provisions only apply to those 60% of the businesses in this parish, those in-between. So if you need help, please call 311-OPTION 2. 311-OPTION 2. And you will get partnered with a Lita representative economic specialist. From the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., there'll be someone manning the phones, but if you don't get through the first time, or if you call outside the hours, it's okay. Just leave your name, leave a message, someone will call you back. That answer your question?
Yes, sir. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lady, Ms. Liz Ebert, and thank you, Mayor President Josh, for that explanation.
Thank you.
Mr. Lazar?
Mayor President, I don't want to get ahead of you.
Sure.
I wasn't sure if you was going to give us some kind of status update or report or whatever the case may be.
Should we just move to that?
Yes, sir.
On where we are and all that?
I'm going to get to it.
Okay, so that being the case, I'll wait until you...
Yeah, you're going to do it in your report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll wait until you do your report.
I'm ready either way.
No, let me finish this, then we'll...
No, thank you.
Okay. There you go. Yeah. Okay, there you go. I would like to remind all that due to the stay-at-home order and to ensure compliance with requirements set forth in the executive order, there was no joint meeting. All items needed approval by both councils have been placed on the individual meeting agendas. Also, if you call 337-291-8428 prior to reading of item, you will be contacted to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda item for which you signed up to speak. Item number 13, report and/or discussion item will be moved for discussion prior to introductory item. That's item number 13. I would like to remind all that a special meeting of Lafayette Public Power Authority will follow this meeting. Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, President, do you have your executive report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. First item, the budget to actual. It has been, I'm told, it's been submitted to each council member. If you have questions, please email Director Tubbs directly or call her with any questions. She asked me to relay that information to you. Also, and thank you for this opportunity to allow us to report on the administration's activities to the council. Thought it might be appropriate, and I appreciate you, Councilman Lazar, for asking, and each of you, because it's been over a month. We're roughly out of months since we've been able to visit here as two bodies of government. And, you know, it's been really, it's been really helpful, the communication between the councils and the administration. I appreciate everything that you're doing. I know that while we may be separated physically, it's good to know that we are unified on the fight in the front, and I appreciate you. So between March 18th and April 15th, in regards to the Cajun Dome screening site, there were 2,011 vehicles that have came through, that went through the Cajun Dome screening site. Of those vehicles, 646 were screened out, and 1,365 tests were administered for COVID-19. I want to thank Lafayette General, I want to thank Our Lady of the Lord, and our National Guard, Police Department, Fire Department for coming through, our Marshals Department. Because let me tell you guys, it was March 16th when we pulled together our medical task force to discuss the screening site, and I gave them a pretty hard timeline, two days, March 18th, probably less than, right? Less than two days. Looking back, it's kind of, you can kind of laugh at it, but at the time, it was pretty, it still is pretty serious. But kudos to them, and thank you. Thank you to our healthcare personnel, because let me tell you, they manned it. They staffed it. It was their test. Our parish came together and allocated some emergency funds to fund certain aspects of the operation, but for our healthcare leaders in this parish coming together, we wouldn't have had that screening site. So thank you, thank you to the Cajun Dome, and just everybody involved in that. Good parish initiative, good leadership initiative. I also want to invite everyone to, just to remember three numbers, 211, 311, and 911. We are still in a public health emergency. We, I'm so thankful for the efforts made at the national level, the state level, and here locally. It appears, our governor has reported that we have, seems like we flattened the curve, which is good, but flattening the curve doesn't mean we're out of, and you know, and our councilmen, they're not able to exercise social distance, so they have the mask on, I appreciate that. But to all of our listeners out there, all of our viewers, all of our wonderful constituents that we're blessed to serve, don't get complacent. Continue to exercise social distancing, continue to wash your hands, try to avoid touching your face. But these numbers, 211, 311, 911, remember those. 211, if you have general questions about COVID-19, or this particular status of this disease state in our state, and just have general questions, please call 211. 311 is a wonderful service that was here before I was sworn in, so thank you to our, we had three of our five members that helped put this in action. Thank you. But 311, option one, there's a 24/7 operation going on still to this day. Thank you to SCP Health. Dr. Schumacher is taking the lead on that. It's free to our constituents, 311, or you can call 534TEST, 534TEST. 24/7, it's free. There's healthcare, there's a team of healthcare providers that are on the other end of the phone, and that you can ask questions about COVID-19. You can even get pre-screened, so it's free. You can do it from the comfort of your home. It's wonderful. And then 911 for any medical emergencies. 211, general information. 311, specific information, option one. 911 for any health emergency, or any emergencies. Also, one of our councilmen, Louis, our chair, had mentioned SWLA on Patterson Street on the north side. These guys, they were at our press brief today. They are doing a fantastic job. Look, you can drive through, you can even walk up. It's free testing. If you have a positive test, it's my understanding, they test you again to confirm. So solid job, SWLA. And there's a whole, there's other testing sites in our parish, so please go to the LCG Facebook page. We have a spreadsheet that you can look at, and you can see where the locations are. I believe we even have the phone numbers attached to them if we have that information. So very important information. Also, a big thank you to Brittany and Drew Brees and the Brees Dream Foundation. We have an operation going on, and Councilman Louis joined us one day. Appreciate that, Councilman. And handing out meals. There's a lot of our constituents right now watching and listening, or maybe they'll watch the replay, and I asked you guys to share this information. There's a lot of our constituents that find themselves, do the, no fault of their own, they're underemployed or they're unemployed as a result of this COVID-19 health emergency. There's no shame in this, but thanks to the Brees Dream Foundation, they're funding meals at the Robishow Center, so that's 1919 Erass Landry Road. Officially, we start at 11, but I encourage everyone that's going to take advantage of these services, get there a little early, because if, once we start backing up traffic on Erass Landry, we go ahead and start it. Thank you, Ms. Vee, she's come out there several times even on the weekend, I appreciate that. So thank you for that. Also, during this time, we've had dozens of meetings on the administration side and calls with our medical task force. Thank you to all of our wonderful medical doctors on that task force led by Dr. Stefanski, who wanted to be here, by the way, but she had, she was called to another council meeting, but she said she loves y'all. So I had to pass that. I believe her too. She's a doctor, she can't lie. We've held almost daily calls with our Lafayette Parish mayors to discuss the parish status, best practices, and also disseminating information from the governor. Twice a week, we've had calls with over 30 mayors and parish presidents from all over Acadiana, and we've had consistent communication with GOSEP and the governor's office, and several calls with our legislative delegation. Also extremely excited to announce that Hanes Corporation has donated over 100,000 masks, 100,000. You know, we have just under 250,000 individuals in this parish to put that in perspective. So 100,000 masks, they're reusable, washable, and the intent for that is to help these Safe Shop businesses. So we put these requirements on, hey, you can open up, but you got to have this, this, and this, and one of those requirements, a mask. And that was kind of the biggest obstacle. So really, you know, God works in mysterious ways. It was a blessing. Hanes, I mean, right when we, we announced the Safe Shop, and then all of a sudden, we get the call. So it was really good timing there, so thank you to the Hanes Corporation for doing that and going out of your way to help us out here. That's really the only update. I just have one little request from the council. You know, I'd like to ask each and every city council member, we have a very, very important item, item number 15, and I'd ask you to vote no, no, on using $1.5 million in the City General Fund for the Bottle Art Loft Project. I know we'll have some other discussions about that. I just wanted you to know my position and my respectful request to vote no. We're in pretty serious, serious times, and as we get into the budget process, and I can't wait to work with you, and we have great relationship. I know that we'll get through these trying times together. But COVID-19 has not only created a health emergency, hands down, it has created an economic emergency, and our City General Fund is in dire, is in a dire situation. Thank God we have funds available right now, but that is, if we don't change our spending habits, and I know we all recognize this, you don't even preach to you, but if we don't change our spending habits, we're going to run out of money sooner rather than later. So again, I just ask you to vote no, no, on item 15, and it's an honor to serve with you. I appreciate you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lazar?
Mayor, first of all, I certainly want to echo the thanks to the administration and all of the partners that have assisted us in handling this emergency. And I'm glad you mentioned, because what I was going to say earlier was, to remind people that just because businesses are reopening, doesn't mean that we're out of danger. That the danger is as great today as it was three weeks ago, or a month ago, when we first started, you know, this process. So my advice to people would be to continue to do what you've been doing for the last three weeks, or a month or whatever. You know, stay home unless it's absolutely necessary that you have to go out. It's been well documented, the enhanced risks that this virus is causing in the African-American community. And I'm glad to see that some steps are being taken to begin the process at least of addressing those issues. The opening of the additional clinic, and I'm sure, and I'm hoping that there will be some other locations opening up as we go, that this won't be the only one. I understand that we formed a commission. My only concern, if you will, as far as the daily press conferences are concerned, that's fine. We get notification of those. Jamie does a wonderful job of that, of keeping us informed of that. But my, but when we have important announcements to make, such as the formulation of this commission, I personally would like to get some advanced, you know, just an advance notice, if you will, that it's being done and not hear about it on the six o'clock news, or when you do your presser. Simply asking that. And are we at a point now where you could actually tell us a little bit more about the commission, the structure of it, the makeup, who the members are, how they were selected, and what the goals and objectives of the commission are?
Sure. No, thank you, Councilman. And actually, I have someone that can do that even better than I can, the person that's helping me lead this jointly, Bishop Harvin, who is...
He's in the back, right?
Bishop Harvin, if you're looking, I think, they can see, right? Oh, there we go. I hear somebody rumbling. Maybe I see him. But I also want to note that this is, a lot of times in this emergency, like, I'm not making excuses, I appreciate the request, and we'll definitely take that consideration, do the best we can on communication. The more communication, the better. Good. I'm glad you're here, Carlos. Is that mic hot? Perfect. Bishop, if you don't mind, we're talking about the Equity Task Force, Medical Equity Task Force. So I also want to add that this, that this task force, well, it's not a commission, but it's a task force, just for technical purposes. But also, it's not closed, so if there's any recommendations by the council, I think, Carlos, I can speak for both of us on this, we welcome any recommendation. There's no monopoly on doing good, so.
Absolutely.
So we definitely would invite your recommendations. So can you talk to the council and address the councilman?
Absolutely. Just one more thing before he starts. If we could, I would appreciate, I'm not sure about the other council members, but I would like to at least get a weekly status report, if you will, a summary, a status report, whatever you want to call it, in terms of where we are as we work our way through this process.
I have no objection to that. Sure. And it'll, for efficiency purposes, it'll come through the Office of Communication, you know, but it's, the intent is to get more information, sure.
Yeah, it could be sent out on a Friday, just a weekly recap, if you will, of, you know, not just numbers, but where we are in terms of the whole gamut, if you will.
Sure. I have no problem with that at all. Appreciate the request. Mr. Harvin, you mind talking about the task force that we're all proud of?
Absolutely. Appreciate your question, Councilmember Lazar, and it's great to be with our city council this evening. I want to thank Mayor President Josh Gilery for his support for this initiative. When we heard, two weeks ago yesterday, our governor announced the disparity in numbers of deaths from COVID-19, the coronavirus, all the alarms started to sound, because when we looked at the death rate compared to population size, we were looking at a disparity of 70% death rate compared to 32%, 33% of the African-American population. One death is one death too many. Fortunately, we have seen those numbers decrease from 59, now we're looking at about 56% of all deaths statewide from coronavirus are among African-Americans. We're still trying to get that data for the local level, so we looked at the governor's lead, who established a Louisiana Health Equity Task Force, a COVID-19 Task Force, to begin looking at how can we make an immediate response to increased testing among high-risk populations, speaking African-Americans who suffer from those underlying health conditions. Not only do we need an immediate response, but we need equipment, we need supplies. We are in touch with clinics now on the north side that want to test but can't, because they lack the necessary test kits. And we know in those early days, those test kits were, you know, very few and far between to get, they were hard to get a hold of those. So that's some of the barrier. One of the barriers that some of our clinics have talked to us about, that they can't get those test kits. You need a machine to do that rapid test, and then we're looking at the swab which gets sent off and returns in a few days. So our Health Equity Task Force wants to provide support and networking to those clinics to do an immediate test, ramp-up testing on the north side in those target areas, District 1, Parish and City, and District 5, Parish and City. We need the equipment, we need the PPE. We don't want to expose those first responders and healthcare workers and nurses. We want to make sure that they're protected, as they're serving the community as well. And then, long before COVID-19, we knew that those underlying health conditions, hypertension, heart conditions, diabetes, kidney disease, those are aggravating factors that anyone, black, white, Latino, Vietnamese, anyone suffering with that health profile, is going to be more at risk to show symptoms and then unfortunately to pass away from COVID-19. So long after this crisis is over, we want to make sure that we're going to treat those longstanding health conditions, that that's a health disparity, and that's what COVID-19 has done. So this COVID-19 Health Equity Task Force wants to address those three priority, those areas of priority, so that, as our mayor president said, and the governor's been reporting, we're seeing slow decreases in the infection rate, but this is not the time to become complacent. This is not the time to think that we're out of the woods, because our medical and healthcare professionals are telling us, watch out for the second wave. Y para ellos que se hablan español, por favor cuidado por la ola segundo. Speaking to our Latino community as well, because many of them, we know that Latinos, we have Afro-Latino community members as well, so they identify by ethnic group and not by race. So we want to make sure that everyone who is in that high-risk category is prepared for what could happen in the fall. That if we get too laid back and too relaxed, we want to be in a much better position if this second wave does come than we were. this second wave does come than we were the first time, and everybody was blindsided by those numbers. So we've reached out to Northside Community Healthcare Clinic, we've reached out to SWLA, we've reached out to Bentley Senegal at Our Lady of Lords, we've reached out to Lafayette General. We're so glad of the work, especially that SWLA is doing. We've reached out to Tanya Bolden Ball at SLCC, Eva Del Caillat, she's the owner and operator of Lab Express in the Northgate Mall. Those are some of the facilities that are having difficulty getting some of that testing equipment, that we want to provide networking and support to bring. I want to thank Ryan Domaggio from Schumacher Foundation, he's reached out to us. So we're pulling together an all-star team to really go after this aggressively, following the lead of our mayor president. And what got started at the Cajun Dome, it was a central location, we didn't know it was going to disproportionately affect the African-American community. Now that we know that, now we're responding accordingly.
Mr. Harvin, did you guys reach out to Dr. Moore, Patrick Moore, on Reading Street by J. Wallace Jane?
We haven't reached out to Dr. Moore yet, but we were on a call with him on Monday night for a conference call. We have reached out to the Black Nurses Association, Iris Malone, Linda Peters, they are on board. I forgot to mention them as well. So we're excited that our Black Nurses Association's with us, but there's some African-American doctors as well.
Yeah, reach out to Dr. Moore. Yeah, reach out to Dr. Moore. He has a clinic right there by J. Wallace Jane School, which will be able to serve that whole community. Just give him a call and see.
Absolutely. Because when you start mentioning names, you forget people. Tina Shelvin-Bingham. Tina Bingham Shelvin with McComb Vizay.
I understand.
Yeah, she's on board with us as well. So we're excited about the team that is coming together. Mary Bergeron from Accadiana, Hospice of Accadiana is on board with us. So we're really networking to bring all of our partners together. And we are having our first conference call with our Health Equity Task Force Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. Please stay tuned to the LCG website and our Facebook page. We'll be sending out an invitation tomorrow. And I'd like to take this opportunity to invite you, Councilmember Glenn Lazar, as our city council rep for District Five, you, City Council Chair Pat Lewis. I'll be reaching out to councilmembers Abby Rubin and Brian Tabor, Districts One and Five. We want to target your districts. If you could please give opening remarks, I figured I'd see you, to give you that invitation to be on our conference call and to open us up on Thursday evening as well.
If you could just send us an email or something with the details?
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So we have one task force, am I correct?
Correct. Well, in what regard?
And it's the medical?
The Health Equity Task Force?
Health Equity Task Force.
Yeah, this is, but in what regard, Councilman?
Okay. No, that was the question.
Oh, okay.
Health Equity Task Force. So what I asked earlier about was the structure of it and who have been currently named to it. You know, because, I mean, I may have some ideas, and it may be somebody that's already on it, so I don't want to, you know? So if we get the names of the people that are currently on it.
Yes.
Another person? We invite any, again, I want to say this again, we invite any recommendations that you have. Councilman Lewis just gave a good one that we didn't think about, and not that we purposely didn't think about it. But this is a pretty quick-acting situation, but it sounds like you might have some ideas too, so we welcome that.
I just want to make sure that we have a good cross-section of the community.
Absolutely.
You know, medical people, of course, community activists, people that are actually in the community, that are actually on the front lines, if you will. So could you give me the names of the people that are currently on the task force?
Absolutely.
And then I'll make sure that I'm not duplicating?
And one other person who's going to be key to this effort too is Ms. Jennifer Jackson, who reached out to us and even sent us what the city of Chicago is doing. And it's a great structure, a best practice that we want to look at with the steering committee and also working groups, action groups. So I want to thank Jennifer Jackson publicly for her support with this effort.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor President, I have a question. You mentioned something about the testing is free. That'd be all the sites that you know of, that testing is pretty much free, especially the one at SWLA and any other ones that you may know?
I know the SWLA on Patterson on the north side is free. I don't know for sure the other sites that we listed at LCG. Our CAO may know. Put you on the spot there.
Okay. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I can tell you, we do have a full listing on Lafayette Consolidated Government's Facebook page. That is actually being compiled by the state. So it is a Google Doc. So as testing sites come online and as their criteria changes or the information changes, anybody can go in and update that information. So it is at Lafayette Consolidated Government Facebook page, as well it is on the Louisiana Department of Health website.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, for the purposes of this discussion, though, since we're focusing on very scary statistics that were revealed to all of us about two weeks ago, no positive case is a good statistics, but if there is any positive, at least that number is going down from 70%, you know, down to 56 is one of our latest numbers. But that SWLA clinic is in the north side, so it should be easily readily available for our neighbors, you know, in that particular area of our city, and we welcome everyone to go, it's right on Patterson Street, near here, very easily accessible. Not only can our neighbors drive through, but they can walk up as well, which is very unique, and they have all the proper PPE. We went out, visited there. They're doing a great job out there. But at the Cajun Dome site, for example, you couldn't just walk up. So we had to unfortunately turn some of our neighbors away because of that. So kudos to SWLA, great job to that particular entity, serving really all of southwest Louisiana, but we're fortunate to have some personnel here in Lafayette to do that. Also want to remind everyone, I know we talked about it earlier, but we can't say it enough, and if we can echo it across our bodies of government, 311 is free. 311 Option One or 534 Test. Sometimes your mobile phone won't allow you to call 311, so 534 Test, 311 Option One, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Thank you to our partners at SCP Health. Dr. Schumacher's, Kip Schumacher's led the way on that, so we appreciate that. And it's staffed with medical personnel, so free pre-screening for COVID-19, whether it's our African-American neighbors or some other demographic in our community, it's free and it's available. So we encourage everyone to use that. And it's also a way to do what Councilman Lazar had mentioned, social distancing, you know, you can get pre-screened over the phone where you're not exposing yourself or others in our community, because you may be carrying this very deadly virus and you may not be symptomatic. So let's take it serious and let's utilize the resources we have available to us. And thank you, Carlos, for your leadership. I appreciate it. Does anybody have any other questions of Bishop Harvin?
One more.
Yes, sir. He was standing up there, so I didn't want to.
One more. I'm not sure if you can answer this or not. We said that we tested 1,365 people at the Cajun Dome?
Yes, sir. 1,365.
So that's roughly what percentage of the population of Lafayette Parish?
I'm not a mathematician, but if we, but no, no, it's okay. If you divide 1,365 by 240,000, you, how much is it? 0.5? Half a percent?
Yeah, about half of 1%.
Half of 1%. Okay. Y'all are way better at math than I am. I need to get my calculator.
Right, so.
I know.
So, yeah, so we had about half a percent of the people in Lafayette Parish have been tested, and only about 1% of the nationwide population have been tested. So that's even more of a reason to remind people to continue to be on their guard and to not get a false sense of security because more businesses are opening up. You know, it's still optional, you know, and especially people with, that are in those high-risk categories.
Sure.
And let's not give the impression to people that this disease only affects quote-unquote elderly or sick people, okay? There was a story that came out a couple of days ago about a four-month-old child that died from this disease. There was also a four-year-old child in Detroit, I think, that contracted a disease and died from it. So please, please, do not let your guards down. And when you go to the store, please leave the kids at home. Thank you.
And for the numbers, and I got to, you know, compliment our mayor president and the quick response of putting together that medical task force that set up a triage at the Cajun Dome. That early response, we can now look at the LDH, Department of Health, website. They are now releasing numbers by race by census tract. Our chief communications officer, Jamie Angel, went over that with me today, and we can see that in census tract that's in District One, census tract that's in District Five. There have been 14 deaths, and, let me correct that, yes, 14 deaths and 16. I'm sorry, let me correct that. 30 people, let me correct that, have tested positive within 14 in District One in that area, 16 in District Five. So altogether, on the north side, we've had 30 positive tests.
Out of how many?
Okay. But if you look at Region Four, the total number of deaths is 30. So while we don't know the numbers by parish, if we extrapolate and we just start looking at the whole region, that's eight parishes, eight or nine parishes, 30 people have tested positive on the north side of Lafayette. We don't know the racial breakdown of those folks yet. But we were looking at those numbers and saying that if all, if, you know, if, we've had 17 deaths in Lafayette Parish, we don't know what those demographic breakdown, altogether Region Four, the death rate, I think, is 30. So we've had 30 test-positive. So those numbers, while we shouldn't let our guard down, they should be encouraging that we have socially distanced, we have managed, not that we've defeated, but we're managing, and if we continue, the spread of that virus, just by those preliminary numbers.
So when do you think you guys will receive the breakdown?
We're anticipating, Mr. Chair, and I pressed that request to speak button if you want to cancel it, but we requested it several times in the last couple of weeks, and Dr. Stefanski, I know, has requested that from the state as well. We were told that it would be here early to mid this week, so we're eager, just like everyone, to get that breakdown because it's going to help us to adequately deploy our resources or encourage other entities to put their resources out there. And also, just Councilman Lazar, just to put this in perspective, the numbers that I reported were strictly from the Cajun Dome screening site.
Right.
In the parish, we've had roughly 18,000 tests. So that's pretty significant. And we may have, there was a little glitch in the reporting today from the state that couldn't update our testing, specific tests in the parish as a whole. But I would imagine with these clinics that are stepping up, we keep referencing SWLA, but the nine-plus clinics that are issuing or administering tests at the time, at this time, I would imagine that we've approached that 18,000 mark, which is great. So we look, the more, the better. Data's good, knowledge is power, facts are great, and thank you for breaking that down. It's better, but I want to echo, we cannot be complacent. Look, we're going to take everything we can, we're going to do everything we can to bring our economy back, but we're going to do it in a safe manner, so.
Good deal.
Okay, anything else, Mr.?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lazar, you still have the floor? Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. President?
Nope. No, sir.
Okay, let's move along.
Thank you, Bishop.
We move along to resolutions. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the councils. The five-minute rule does apply. Cindy, please read the number five item, please.
City Resolution 102020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the submission of an application with the Louisiana Highway Safety Commission for a 2020 overtime traffic safety enforcement grant for the Lafayette Police Department.
Okay, I need a motion and a second, please. Motion by Mr. Andy Nakane, second by Ms. Liz E. Bear. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, let's call for the vote on to adopt this resolution.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Cindy, please read item number six.
City Resolution 112020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the submission of an application for a United States Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2020 Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Bill Grant.
Motion and second. Motion by Mr. Glenn Lazar, second by Ms. Lynette Cook. Council discussion. I see, okay, Ms. Cook?
I just have a quick question on this. Well, actually, I think I know the answer, but this is a match, a 20% match, but I understand after some discussion that by applying for this, we're not obligated to this match, which I didn't want to be because, again, we're looking at our funding. So I just wanted to make that clear, that just by applying, we are not obligated to the match at this point, and I think it's going to be a May application and a September is when we'll have to see, and maybe things will be better by then, who knows? But at this point, we're not obligated to that match. I just wanted to make sure that goes on the record.
This, what we are saying that is not guaranteed, I want to make sure we have clarification on that.
Right. We have to put an application first before we even get it, and I know they're asking for the max, the 25 million, which this is, two years in a row, they've done it. This is the third year. We haven't gotten it the last two years. So, you know, chances are, we probably won't get the 25 million for a 20% grant, but we, you know, it's money on the table that I hate to leave it there and just see if we get it, and if things change by September and we can match it, but we're not obligated. I guess that was my main question. I didn't want to say, okay, we're going to do this, and then we obligate the budget to 20% match, and we don't have it. So it is, there's no obligation on this, we're just applying. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Ms. E. Bear?
Yes. Mayor, have, kind of going sidebar conversation on this, Councilwoman Lynette Cook and I had a conversation over the phone about this very grant. Have, and this, I know that we sort of had this discussion last year before you came on. I wanted to see if you've had any discussions about, in the midst of everything else you're doing right now. Of course, you've got all the time on your hands right now, but I didn't know if you've had any discussions. We do a lot of grant writing, and that's great, and we receive grant funds, which is great, but we've noticed time to time that a lot of these grants are matching grants, where we have to put up a portion of funds. Is this something that your administration has considered looking at and maybe coming up, like Councilwoman Cook and I discussed, coming up with some sort of return on investment that they have to show us that we would get? Because right now, we see grant and go, great, free money, right? But I'm noticing more and more, we're seeing more matching grants, and I don't know if that's something that's trickling down from the federal level. So I didn't know if that's something your administration could possibly look into, maybe putting another layer of questioning before it comes to us on why we need this grant, not just replying because it's there. Can you make him live, please?
I always assume these things are live, and I just start talking, so I apologize. Can you, you can hear me now. Okay. Yeah, no, great. Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate that, and I agree with you. We do need basically ROI, and anytime we spend money, if we can have more return on, or analysis as far as return on investment. I will tell you, this is a project that I support wholeheartedly. These are efforts that were made before I took office, as you pointed out, but it's addressed, for everyone listening, tuning in, this is, this particular bill grant is for our university corridor, and it's really one of our gateways that's been neglected a little bit. We have some, I'll give some kudos to one of our directors, hopefully he's watching on that camera right there, Chad Novo Public Works, is doing a wonderful job, if y'all have noticed, on I Tenon University, we're cleaning that area up, it's a gateway, it's looking really good. We're not done yet, and we have more to come. But this is, if you think about it, ambassadors and a little bit... uh, but thi- this is, this is, if you think about it, Ambassador's in a little bit better shape than University, the throughway, if we can work really hard with our federal partners and our state partners to, to clear that up and connect it, that'll take care of our northern and southern, uh, gateways, entrance ways to our city, uh, on that area, so that leaves us with University. So this university corridor is, it's, it's, it's one of our areas that's most hard-hit, uh, there's a lot of disinvestment, as, as you guys know, this is an area where I feel like, when we talk about zero-based budgeting, and, and we, we want to talk about the essentials of government and priorities and infrastructure, I can't, I can't find many other examples that would be better than this one. So even if we do have to have a match, my position is strongly that we find that $5 million, uh, out of the $630 that the taxpayers of this parish send us each year, and, and we make this happen, and I, and I, I feel like we will, I feel like we can work together and get through that, so, um, if, if Congress is, is willing, or excuse me, if the federal, federal government's willing to give us 25, we'll, we'll find, or 20 of the 25, we'll find the five, but, um, but, so kudos to the previous administrations and city parish councils for, for paving the way for this particular project, it's something that I, I wholeheartedly adapt. I can also tell you that our, our meeting with our Louisiana delegation and sitting down with the governor, I, this is one of the, usually very minimal time when you have with, with that, with, with him as well, um, these are one, this is one of the projects that I, that I briefed him on, so it's, it's not, uh, it's not taken lightly, the efforts that have been made and that are continuing to be made, so I appreciate your partnership with this.
Right, and so just let us know if you have any questions as far as, we kind of tossed around some ideas of how, what we would like to see as councilmembers come to us in order to make a decision on a, only a grant that is a match, all the others, if we're getting it, we're getting it, but if it's a match, we'd like to, some things we'd like to see, so just let me know when you're ready for that discussion.
You got it.
Thank you.
And once COVID-19, uh, once we can start meeting more, I, I welcome, and I, I think it's important our constituents know that we do meet regularly, we don't violate public law, meeting laws, Ms. Ms. Varonk would never let us do that, my administration, we wouldn't do that, but, uh, but we do meet, uh, monthly, and, and you guys have my phone number, so I appreciate, appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you, that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, President?
Yes, sir.
I, I heard you say something about, uh, this particular resolution here, it's part of University Avenue Corridor, correct?
Yes, sir.
This one here, and about the 500, I mean, the $5,000 coming from the state? Is that what you're talking about, five, the grant money, is this part of this, how, how would this all be?
So the bill grant, we're asking for a total of 20, uh, Council, Councilwoman Cook accurately described 25 million as the ask, for lack of a better word, so our match of 25, 20% would be the 5 million, i- if we're even approved, we're not approved, this has been requested in the past, we've not been approved, um, approved, excuse me, but this is a federal grant, and we are, uh, we are working with our congressman, Congressman Higgins is, is very much familiar with this, and, and I, I left him out in my, my speech, I apologize to him, he's working very hard, Colonel Ellison, our, our field director here, uh, for this particular area, I mean, this is, we're very much aligned on the federal, state, and local level for this particular, uh, project, and, um, one day soon, hopefully we can talk about the I-49 connector as well, because that's another project everybody seems to be aligned on, um, and again, I, I mention this purely because I, I, our constituents, we're all focused on COVID-19 as we should be, but, but the functions of government are still operating, and we're still having these discussions, um, modified, and, and obviously, but, um, but they're still being had, so I'm very eager to, to see this, this, uh, this project come to fruition.
What, what project?
The bill, the university corridor.
Okay.
Yes.
The university corridor.
Yep.
Isn't that part of the, well, which?
As, as are you, Councilman, right? Can I count on you?
Oh, I, I am, especially with the, uh, the bottle off, the one that you're asking not to support.
Well, that's correct, so that's a different discussion, so.
Yeah, right.
Now, when we're talking about that, Councilman, I appreciate that, that comment, so item number 15 would be loaning, and we can call it a loan, but it's really just a grant, because these are, oh, I thought we were, okay. Did I mention that I adamantly ask you guys to vote no on that? Okay.
Yeah, and I'm adamantly asking to support it. Okay, um, any more discussion on, on this here? Okay. Call, uh, Ms. Williams, any public comments?
Mr. Chair, we did have one citizen who did not wish to speak, who emailed, did not wish to speak, in support of the item.
Okay. Call for the vote, please. Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
District Two?
Oh, I apologize. Oh, no, never, never ignore the CA. You see that look? Mr. Chair, I just want to add, because I think it's important, maybe you might want to take this in consideration before you press your vote, because it's not analogous, the, uh, bottle off in the university corridor, because see, the university corridor, we would still own, see, we would still own that, our taxpayers would still own that if we paid the $5 million match, our people would own that, but in the bottle-off scenario, we are giving money to a private, uh, company, so just, just not analogous, wanted to throw a comparison. Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to, again, echo on this comparison, what have you, um, we're not there yet, but we're getting ready to vote on something that, that can affect this, 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 uh, resolution.
Sure.
Yeah. It is tied to it, you know, that's where some of these, uh, matching fund would be coming from, this $5 million has something to do with that $1.5 million, if, if we support this, this one and a half million dollars, that way, that's where the $5 million will come in, if we do not support this, okay, that's, we have to make sure we're clear on this. Okay, call for the vote.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 12, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council authorizing a non-warranty cash sale of the property at 512 Evangeline Drive to an adjoining landowner pursuant to Louisiana Revise Statute 472202B for the price of the sales anticipated costs.
Motion by Mr. Andy Nakane, second by Ms. Liz E. Bear, council discussion. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote, please.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 13, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council granting authority to take preliminary action relative to the issuance, sale, and delivery of not exceeding $80 million of public improvement sales tax refunding bonds of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana in one or more series, on a tax exempt or taxable basis, for the purpose of refinancing outstanding debt of the issuer, providing for certain terms of said refunding bonds, making an application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said refunding bonds, hiring professionals in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion is second, please. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Any council discussion? Ms. Williams, any, open, sorry, Mr. Andy Nakane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was just curious, this is basically just, it's refunding bonds, we're trying to get lower interest rates, um, so basically, reselling the bonds and to, so we can be charged less interest on the money we, we borrow to pay back. Is anything that really heavily affects this refunding? Does it go back to our credit rating? Does it go back, back to our general fund balance? What, what can affect this refunding, where we may not even see it? What if, what if the bonds aren't sold again, the refunding bonds? Can that happen? I'm trying to find out who could answer that question.
Question. All right, so I, I can give you my notes, and then I also, I know our Director of Finance is watching, so if, if my, if my answer's not adequate enough, that's, that won't hurt my feelings, we can ask her, so if she could start making her way down, she's on her way, good. All right, so, uh, this particular provision is asking the State Bond Commission for approval to refund or refinance these bonds in order to get better flexibility, financial flexibility in the future, to respond to any economic emergencies. Now, uh, our position is that this is kind of a last worst-case scenario type situation, uh, we don't anticipate it, but we want to be prepared in case it does, but, um, the idea, while, while Ms. Toops is making her way down, I just want everybody to know, we're constantly, she's constantly, uh, looking for ways to refund, especially, it's a little, little more, um, challenging in this economic situation that we're in, uh, a lot of uncertainties, but the idea of refunding or refinancing our bonds, um, in, in, in a multitude of ways, whether it's deferring principal payments to pay on interest right now, because of these economic uncertain times, or ideally, finding better rates, that would always be beneficial to, to our taxpayers in this regard.
But it's, it's a big cost savings for us when we can refund them at lower interest rates, and defer certain payments, and, and push more money back in our pockets for what we need to spend it on.
Absolutely.
I, I think it's a great idea moving forward, my concern is, is what can affect this?
Yes.
Because we have a lot of circumstances going on right now.
Absolutely.
That could affect this refunding, where we may be voting on something that won't happen.
I, I think that's extremely fair, a fair analysis, uh, so we'll, if, if you guys wouldn't mind, we, we'll, I'll defer to, to Lori on that, to our Director of Finance, she does a great job, and, um, I know you guys have had great conversations with it.
It's not necessary to the vote, but I sure would like to know that information, uh, because I plan to support this, I'm sure everybody here supports this refunding.
No, thank you, Council.
So we can move forward, but this sure would be a question that would be nice to be answered out of curiosity, because for future reference, especially with item 15 coming up.
Right.
Certain things like that, we probably should discuss these things, so.
And, and Council?
That's really all I have, and Ms. Toop may give us an answer at her, her leisure, but I think that would be good for everyone to know.
And that, that would be a relevant discussion, I, I would submit for items number eight, not only number eight, but number nine, 10, 11.
And so forth, correct.
Yeah.
Exactly one of those items, essentially, so.
I agree, so thank you for asking.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Lazar?
Andy, just for, just for point of clarification, uh, we're not actually voting to refi- voting to refinance them tonight.
No, sir, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, we're just voting to, yeah.
We're just voting to bring this forward to refunding. My, my question was, what can affect these bonds? I mean, I have no problem voting to refund these bonds, I'm not at all against this. My question is, what can affect the refunding?
I understand.
What, in our status as a government?
Factors, yeah.
In a city, would it affect refunding, the sale of the refunding bonds, the way they don't sell? Is that a possibility? Is that in the scenario? That's all I was asking, and Ms. Toop, it really doesn't have to be answered right now, but I know you have commented, Lori, and that, if you want to comment, that would be great.
Sure, uh, I apologize for the delay, and I'm at somewhat of a disadvantage, because I heard your initial question, and any discussion after that, I was commuting to the podium, so I didn't hear that part of the conversation. But yes, uh, as a matter of fact, for the first time in my career, the last administration, we went out for, uh, a bond sale, and it didn't move, and so it can definitely happen, and what, you just pulled the bond sale, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it was not a big deal, it was unusual, and it, we panicked at first, but it turned out that there was reason, there was economic activity on the market that day that was unexpected. For these bonds, you know, there's a lot of variables going on, uh, when we started this process, we were looking at a savings. Now, we don't know what it's going to bring, but the first step is to put the application before the Bond Commission, and I'll tell you, some of the stuff on the agenda, the utilities, probably not going to happen, but it cost us 100 bucks, and the attorneys work on this all at one time, so they don't charge me anything extra, so, I, you know, I, I threw everything on the table, and, uh, under the circumstances that we're in, now when we come up with a plan, I will have to come back to you, and I'll tell you, we are considering other things, like pushing principal back or extending the debt, but that will be brought to you when that decision is made. We haven't made any of those decisions, we just know that it's a possibility. Uh, the last administration initiated a change in the way they handled bonds, and there might be a need for us to do some of that, those restructuring in order to continue projects that we've already committed to, uh, to building.
I probably understand, I'm just, uh, curious, this isn't a guarantee?
It's not a guarantee, no, it's a plan, it's just a tool that we're working with right now to, uh, get us through this crisis, or if this is the new normal, to get us through, getting used to the new normal.
So our best practices could affect this refunding also.
Our best practices in the past have put us in a good position that if we have to do something we don't like, it's easier for us to handle, and when I say that, I would never want to stretch out a loan, but if, if I have my house mortgage, and I've got a reduction in some of my income, I might consider stretching out my ho- my home mortgage in order to, to get me through that economic downturn. There's really no difference with our bonds. I, I keep it very simple, uh, I don't ever get into any of those variable rate debt, I don't get into any balloon debt, but in a case like this, it affords us the opportunity to, to stretch out, uh, some debt or defer some principal, but all that will be made very clear to you when we come to you with the ordinance, asking you to approve our plan.
Thank you, Ms. Toop, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay or go back?
Let's see, I'm trying to count, I'm, I'm good. If, Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, and the council, I, I think there might be some other financial questions, we're not over the 10, okay?
Have back and forth.
Would you mind? It'll, it'll save you on some cardio, unless you just want the steps.
I don't mind staying, what happened, I ran out the office, office, and as soon as I hit the door, and I realized I didn't have my mask, I had to run back.
I maintain, I maintain my six feet.
That's it.
To Councilman Nakane here, so.
All good.
Thank you, though, thank you, Ms. Toop, thank, thank you, Council.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can, can we do, uh, since eight to 12 are basically the same thing, can we vote on them in global?
No.
We can't, because it's.
Each, each individual.
I'm trying to take a shortcut, I guess.
Not our final document. Efficient.
Okay, let's move along, Cindy, please, next item. Number nine, I believe.
District Four?
Go vote, okay.
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 14, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council granting authority to take preliminary action relative to the issuance, sale, and delivery of not exceeding $27,500,000 of limited tax refunding bonds of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana in one or more series, on a tax exempt or taxable basis, for the purpose of refinancing outstanding debt of the issuer, providing certain terms of said refunding bonds, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said refunding bonds, hiring professionals in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion by Mr. Andy Nakane, second by Council Lady, Councilman, uh, Ms. Liz E. Bear.
Say, Councilman.
Councilwoman, any council discussion? Yeah, it's getting foggy. No count, uh, Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Just vote on this, to adopt this resolution, please.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 15, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council granting authority to take preliminary action relative to the issuance, sale, and delivery of not exceeding $35 million of communication system revenue refunding bonds of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, in one or more series, on a tax exempt or taxable basis, for the purpose of refinancing outstanding debt of the issuer, providing certain terms of said refunding bonds, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said refunding bonds, hiring professionals in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion is second, please. Motion is second, please. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Glenn Lazar. Any council discussion? I see none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No public comments.
Please vote, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 162020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council granting authority to take preliminary action relative to the issuance, sale, and delivery of not exceeding $135 million of utilities revenue refunding bonds of the City of Lafayette, State of Louisiana in one or more series on a tax exempt or taxable basis for the purpose of refinancing outstanding debt of the issuer, finding certain terms of said refunding bonds, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said refunding bonds, hiring professionals in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion second, please. Motion by Mr. Nakane, second by Ms. Lizzie Bear. Council discussion? None. Ms. Williams, public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 172020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council giving preliminary approval of the issuance, to the issuance of not exceeding $35 million of revenue notes in one or more series of the City of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of and providing for the sale of certain terms of said revenue notes and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion, please, second. Motion by Ms. Lizzie Bear, second by Ms. Anthony Nakane. Council discussion? Ms. Cook?
Lori, can you kind of run me through this one? Is this, this is the new unusual one that you have not seen before. The State Bond Commission had made a path to expedite, for local governments to expedite, a cash loan. Certainly, we're going to try not to take this cash loan. But it allows us to get everything in line in case it is necessary, and it would be to help us continue offering the services in the City of Lafayette. This loan would be paid back by City General Fund. Right now, the state is only talking about possibly a two-year payback. I don't see that helping us at all. But, you know, we're not the only government that's experienced in this downturn. Yesterday's activity on the oil market really doesn't help us very much. But it's just something that I want to make sure that we have out there and approved. And hopefully, we don't have to go after it. We're going to come to you with some hard decisions pretty soon. But this, again, is just something to help bridge the gap as we make our way into what sales tax revenues are going to be and, you know, the funding in the City General Fund. So this is just providing the opportunity to apply? Right. We've never done this before, and, you know, we had built up fund balance for stuff, situations like this. But you kind of had a whole bunch of things coming together all at once. One of any of these three things we could have overcome. But all three, between the $18 million in fund balance, the COVID crisis, the oil crisis, it's a lot at one time. Thank you.
Ms. Bear?
Are there dedicated things that we must, if we did get it, we moved forward, we got the funding? Is there certain things that it is earmarked for, like payroll or projects? Or, I know it has to be in the City of Lafayette, but are there any other dedications that are with that?
No, there are no dedications. You will have to approve how that money is expended. The administration could put a plan for you. And that plan would be comprised of, you know, this is what we're going to cut, and this is what we're going to keep. Or we're not going to cut anything, and this helps us keep everything. You know, it'll be that type of situation.
Okay, so it'll be presented to us at a council meeting to vote on?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Let's call for the vote, please.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
I'd like to remind everyone that item number 13 will be discussed prior to the introductory item. And ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Cindy, please read item number 14.
City Ordinance 242020, in orders of the Lafayette City Council or the rising Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell 68 surplus golf courts, which are no longer needed for public purposes, to golf courts of Louisiana for a total bid price of $122,400, as per the attached list golf courts.
Okay, I need a motion, motion by Ms. Cook, and second by Mr. Lazar. Council discussion? I see none. Mr. Mayor President, make your hat, go ahead on, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this particular item was submitted for your consideration before the COVID-19 public health emergency. I'm asking respectfully that we defer this item with your permission. We have some questions in regards to the financial impact that this may have, and I'd like further discussion or further consideration so we can present it to you.
I make motion to defer?
Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Cook to defer, second by Ms. Cook. Any discussion on the deferment? Okay, let's vote on the deferment.
And it's just deferred indefinitely, or do you want to put a timeline on it?
We would ask defer indefinitely, and we can always submit it for your consideration.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, they did have one person who did not wish to speak, who opposed the resolution, the ordinance, actually.
Okay. Can you just vote on that, please?
The motion on the floor is to defer indefinitely.
Okay, motion to defer indefinitely.
Good call for the roll.
Thank you.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The motion to defer indefinitely is approved. City Ordinance 252020, in orders of the Lafayette City Council, meaning the fiscal year 1920, operating capital budgets of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to transfer funds for the bottle art loft project loan into a separate account created for that purpose by using the University Avenue Initiative activity to fund capital projects previously funded with funds from the City General Fund, reducing the contribution of City General Fund to the University Avenue Initiative activity and appropriating $1,535,000 within the Development and Planning Department.
Need a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Council discussion, okay. Mr. Nakane, any Nakane?
I have some concerns, which we had discussed prior, Mr. Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
That so many people are saying that this, they calling it a loan, but basically it's a gift, a 40-year no-interest gift, which we'll probably never see the money on. And it's $1.535 million. It's being taken out of capital improvements in dealing with fire protection, dealing with school safety, is dealing with improvements of parks, to go to a private investor to basically build a apartment complex for low-income artists at $400 plus a square foot. It's a lot of money. And it's a lot of cost per square foot for any construction. Having been involved in that for just about all my life, I question this. And everybody is saying that this ordinance here, this funding, basically will improve the whole four-corner area, including the demolition of less-paid motel. Well, I don't see any guarantees in that at all. All I see is somebody gaining a lot of money for their personal gain, but they don't have to pay any interest on it or pay anybody back. It's a win-win. How can you lose? I'd love for the City of Lafayette to loan me $1.5 million for 45 years, because I won't be around then. Good luck collecting it. I have trouble at this point supporting this, and I can't see taking that money out of the General Fund. It might be so dearly needed for other things. I just, at this point, I would have to say I can't support this for that reason. We're not gaining any money. In fact, we're losing money, judging by what we spent last administration, the debt we incurred for this administration. The less money coming in by way of sales taxes. And I understand that the improvements, this is dire. It's terrible. That less-paid area, it needs improvement. But at whose expense? Because this doesn't help but that one area. It doesn't help the people who live down Johnson Street. It doesn't help the people that live off East Bayou Parkway. It doesn't help the people that live down Congress. But fire protection will. School safety will. Parks and Recreation will. That's going to help a lot of people. And I am for this. I'm for improving that area, but I don't like the way it's being funded. I can't see a no-interest loan. It just boggles my mind that that could happen with government dollars. I experienced that in the Costco situation. How much money were lost there? We were promised a police station. It never happened. So I just don't trust private business in cooperation with government with nothing on the table for them. We never win. I'd like to hear more about that. Is anybody here who can discuss this and bring this forward?
When you finish, somebody else will want to discuss.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, if you don't mind, Ms. Cook, I just need to say something. Again, we just approved something, when I say something, I'm talking about that $1.5 million. Now, for us to get, when I say us, for the city, to get that $5 million, it depends on this $1.5 million. If we do not approve this, we're not going to get the $1.5 million, and we won't get the million dollars. I mean, not the $1.5, we will not get the $5 million. So that's the only way we'll get that $5 million. And then when you talk about that is a given, is a law, these investors, the investors have about a $30 million funding that they put into this project, $30 million. So that's their, that's their part. Our commitment would be that $1.5 million. Yes, the previous administration approved this, and we voted on this. In fact, we three council members that voted on this back then. So let me finish, let me finish. You talk, you talk, you hear the floor. Okay, the council previously approved this law for the bottle art loft project to be funded through the University Avenue corridor. That's where the money is coming from, not the General Fund. If you look at your agenda, you read it, look what they have on there. No physical impact. No physical impact. So there's nothing coming from the General Fund. So when you talk about a given, it's the University Initiative, the corridor debt project. That's where it's coming from. So if we do not use this fund from the university, the money stays there. We can't put it in the General Fund. It stays with the university. That's where it stays. Again, these people, when I say these people, I'm talking about the developers. They went in Baton Rouge to the Bond Commission. It's all approved. This is what you call a shovel-ready project. In May, they will start demolishing the less-paid motel. They will start demolishing that.
Where's that written?
You, I...
Where's that written?
It's in the contract. Did you read the contract?
I haven't seen the contract.
Well, did you?
It's not been presented to me because it went to y'all, the previous council. Didn't come to this council.
Well, then again, again, we voted on it. We voted on that contract. The previous council voted on that project.
Mayor President Gilroy, did you see that contract?
He wasn't the previous council.
Did you see that contract, Mayor President Gilroy?
No, no, not yet. Not yet. He doesn't have the floor. Yeah, sure. Thank you. Appreciate it. Again, that's, this is what happened. The previous administration signed this, and the council voted on it. They voted on it. So when we talk about, on the other side of town, the, no one getting it, it's about, again, this is university funds. If you have some funds in an area that you are representing, representing, the money will not, the money stays in that particular project. It doesn't go to the General Fund. So we, if the university do not use this funding, Mr. Nakane, it stays in university. It does. It stays there. Again, look at your agenda. It says no physical impact. This is a project that's shovel-ready. The permits are ready, and they are ready to tear down, demolish the less-paid motel, and do what they have to do to make this. And everyone knows how it looks on university. You've been on the council for about the last five, six years. You voted on that for, I know you voted for a police station. It never happened. It never did. It never did. But you voted to do something with the less-paid motel. Now you represent people, there's neighbors right there. They have people that send me emails that live in their neighborhood, and they send you those emails because I saw it. And they are supporting this project. They live around there. That's an area that's like Cuba. Nothing happened there in the last 40, 50 years. And now we finally have a developer that wants to do something in that area. I wish it would have been someone local, but it didn't happen. It's someone from another city. You know, and what happened, we finally have someone to do something, and why we want to deny them. And then we voted on this. It was just a problem that the money, the funds were not in the appropriate account. And now we're just trying to put it in the, with this ordinance and this amendment, we'll go into the appropriate account. And that's all. It was voted on in December on that same contract. And I know, Ms., I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The reason there's no fiscal impact is because we're taking money from the Fire Department and from Parks and Recreation.
And then that's where the University Avenue is going to pay back. And it's going to pay, and it's going to pay, that's where the money is coming in.
That's why there's no fiscal impact.
Right.
It's not like they're just, but we're taking money from other projects to put on this project.
Well, if you, if that's so, Mr. Nakane, if really that's so, it would be a physical impact. Whenever you move, no, no, no.
You can take a nickel from one pocket and put the nickel in the other pocket. There's no fiscal impact. Well, that's what we're doing.
But it's a physical impact because you're doing something. But then you're talking about personal. When you're talking about government, a physical impact, if when you're taking money from one account, that's a physical impact, and you're putting it somewhere. That's a physical impact. Now, what you're talking about is personal, taking it out of your pocket and putting it in another pocket. But if you take it out of my pocket, you're impacting my pocket. If you take it out of my pocket, if you take a dollar from Pat Lewis and I give it to Mr. Nakane, it's a physical impact. Simple.
The reason there's no fiscal impact, Mr. Lewis,
Yes, sir.
is that the money is being moved from one place to another.
Right.
Period.
Period, right. Right. You're right. You're right.
So it's going to go from Parks and Recreation and Fire Department and School Safety to a private pocket. That's what's happening.
Well, if that was so, it would be a physical impact, but what's happening, the University corridor is going to pay this fund back. So there's no physical impact. The budget will not be cut. The budget will not be cut. Not at all.
No, it hasn't been because it's being depleted from one and put to another. But the Hyman Park is still not going to get renovated.
The representative for Hyman Park is right there. He's not complaining about it.
You know?
He's right there. The way the funds are coming from is from the north side of town. He's not complaining about it. It's coming from Hyman Park, representative right there.
It's in black and white. It's pretty obvious where the money is coming from.
Yeah, but he's not going to, ask him right now if he want to give up his fund or not.
But I just need to see some proof as to what's going on with this money, because it doesn't sound very clear to me at all.
Again, HRI, the developer will be starting demolition, demolition in May if this passes along. So I encourage my colleagues to support this.
I think Ms. Cook wanted the floor, please.
I'm sorry, Ms. E.
I think Ms. Neck, Neck Cook wanted the floor.
Yes, she does.
All right, thank you. I don't know if I want to get into this, but I'm going to get into this. I have struggled with this, I have to say. You know, I, I've kind of gone back and forth with just what, both arguments, because they're both very good arguments. When I look at this project, I look at what the positives of this project would be, all right? We're looking at a $35 million project where we're putting in 1.5, okay? That's not a bad investment on a $35 million project, million-dollar project. And so then I look at what are some of the positives of this. Number one, it's going to address a very neglected part of our community that has, that is, looks terrible. And there, you know, needs to be addressed, which we, as a city, probably would not have the funds to do it. And I'm not sure another developer, developers haven't been knocking on our door to actually do anything in this corridor, all right? And this is part of the University corridor. It's a little bit further down, but it is part of our gateway into Lafayette. This particular project is going to provide about 300 jobs in the community. And if we're talking about, you know, right now, looking for people being out of work, we're going to provide about 300 jobs in the community, and they're going to be from local people. I have spoken with the developer himself, and he has, you know, they're going to, they're going to have a job fair, and they're going to ensure that these people are hired from the community. So those people that maybe have lost their job, okay, this is maybe not a bad thing. The building supplies, we might buy them from your place. So that's, you know, we might have an increase in sales tax, a little bit of bump from that. So we're using, you know, local supplies. So again, in our discussion of our sales tax revenues going down, our jobs being lost, this, to me, is a little bit of a bright spot that could help us get through some of that because it is ready to go. It's not, we're not looking at it down the road. It is ready to go. May 12 is the closing, and they're talking about at the end of the month, you know, knock, starting, starting the less pay to knock it down. So, you know, to me, these are some of the projects. It's, you know, it is shovel-ready. Another thing that I think is a positive, if we can improve this little area, we might be doing something to improve crime in this area as well. And in the Oak Lawn subdivision, that's close to this area, too. They, you know, they are supportive of it because they're thinking, okay, this might help with some of the crime in that area if we start to show some growth in there. The grocery store that closed right there down the way, okay, maybe there'll be an incentive to start opening up that strip mall. And if there's more life on that corner, again, it will spread down the way. And, look, I understand that we are going to have some very serious issues with money. I mean, I get that. But I guess in my mind, do we need to stop every project that has already been approved? We've got people that have already spent, for instance, the contractor, let's see, $300,000 in it already. The NPO has a half a million they put into it already. They've had to file for five extensions. So we're looking at 5,000 to 10,000 each extension. So that's another 50,000 potentially in there. They've had to file for five extensions, so we're looking at 5,000 to 10,000 each extension. So that's another 50,000 potentially in there. Iberia Bank locally is an equity owner as well. So there is a lot of community involvement. There's a lot of money that's been put in there already because we said, we're going to do it. We said, okay, yes, we have voted on it. We voted on it to happen. And so the other thing that I look at, that, you know, basically we're getting 5 million from the, from the government. John Bell Edwards has committed to that. And these kind of projects, only, they've happened in New Orleans, but usually Baton Rouge, Shreveport. We seldom have gotten any of these types of developments in Lafayette. I'm concerned that if we pull the plug on something that we've committed to, that we can kiss any of these kind of developments goodbye because we're, who's going to trust us? Yeah, we want to do it. Oh, on second thought, no, we can't. Now, again, this is an interesting time. I will acknowledge that. No one knew we were going to have the drop out of the oil. No one knew we were going to have the, the pandemic. But I guess in my mind, this could be something, it could be in a little bit of investment to help us maybe provide some opportunity during this time for sales tax, for jobs. So, you know, I'm really, like I said, I've struggled with this. I've gone back and forth with it. But I do think that, and, and at the end of the day, I do feel like I like, I'm an optimist. I like to think that, okay, things are going to get better. And if we can provide a little bit of an opportunity for them to get better, then, then, you know, let's not, let's not walk away from it. You know, there's some other things, this, this is some of the things from the, uh, the actual contractor himself, the, the developer, I should say. You know, the 10 subs, the sub, subcontractor, excuse me, from Lafayette totaling a 2.9 million dollars in contract value. That's going to be in the community. There are four nearby cities, Abbeville, Vermillion Parish, a couple of those places in there. They're going to have another, almost another million dollars in contract value. So, you know, again, we're looking at opportunities for this area that, that would not be there. I mean, I, you know, I, I feel like, yes, we're going to be in a situation where, hmm, halt, everything kind of stops. This is something that maybe potentially has, it is ready. It is ready to go because we said we were going to do it. And I just, I don't feel good about, you know, I, I don't feel good about many things in this in terms of the money that's involved, yes, and the potential of the, what's coming in front of us, but I guess commitment. You know, we are a city that we've committed to do this with these people. You know, if we had another developer, you know, basically that was, wanted to do a project and we pulled the plug on them at the last minute, we, we've had that discussion many times. You know, don't do that. We can't do that. That's not good business. You know, I just, I feel like this is a, you know, maybe not the same thing, but a similar thing as far as we gave, you know, we, we committed to it. It was our era. You know, I mean, I know that some of the clause in the contract said something to the effect of subject to funds available. Okay, well, the funds were available at the time. We, we made that agreement. The funds are still there. We just, we just, we put, we put them in the wrong fund. It, you know, had we not done that, this project would, would have probably gone through. We wouldn't be having this discussion. And so I guess, you know, basically, we had committed to doing the 1.5. I feel like it, it isn't, is in the community's best interest in terms of keeping a little bit of, you know, activity, economic activity going that we follow through with this. And I, the, the, you know, the, the outreach that this project will, will create, the energy that it's going to create in that whole area, you know, will hopefully bring more sales tax in, more, you know, developers coming in. So, you know, yeah, is it a long-term loan that I'm not comfortable with that part either? Yeah, you know, and will we get it back? Well, I'll be dead. But, you know, maybe, maybe Liz will see it, but I won't be here. You know, but, you know, would, would, you know, if we did it in a grant, let's just give it to them. Then we can use capital funds for it. And it's, there's no issue in terms of, you know, the budget in terms of, uh, sales, I mean, um, the sales tax competition. So, you know, I mean, do we want to go that route? You know, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's just a gimme there, you know? But, you know, if we, if we did it that way, we basically have the capital money, we could, we could put it, but we, you know, again, we don't want to give money away though. Let me, let me just backtrack on that. But I guess my point is, I, I have leaned over to the side of, I feel like this is a project that will help develop that area of Lafayette, which, which truly needs it and eventually hopefully create a little more economic opportunity, a little more sales tax during this time of recovery that we're going to need some of that, you know, jobs and everything. So, you know, that's my, that's my two cents. So that's kind of where I am with it. So, um, uh, you know, anxious to hear any, any more discussion on it, but at this point in the game, that's, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Yes, sir, Mr. President there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, um, I personally appreciate the dialogue and discussion. And I appreciate, um, the opportunity that our constituents get to see, uh, a diverse areas of, or diverse positions illustrated in a very respectful manner. So I appreciate that. And Councilman Lewis, I think you said more on that one argument than you did the last four years combined. I'm joking.
No, no, I'll repeat that again. Yeah, you are absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
That's a compliment. I'm picking with you.
You're right. No, no, you are correct. You are correct.
Well, eloquently said though.
No, that's true. That's true.
I appreciate it. Look, I respect you two gentlemen. I respect Councilman Cook, Councilman Abir, Councilman Lewis, all you guys. Thank y'all. I, I, I can't tell you. I can't adequately express how much I appreciate that, that discussion. And I also appreciate you giving me the opportunity to kind of add a little bit. One, one thing to, to think about, Councilman, Councilwoman Cook, you had mentioned the governor agreed to the 5 million, the, this. The governor didn't give us anything. The governor agreed to use our money to give back to us. So these, and I, I say that not tongue-in-cheek. I tell, I say that specifically that we as elected officials, let us never forget the money that we get to play with is not our money. So the governor doesn't get, give us anything unless he has a 5 million dollar check that he wants to write to the city of Lafayette. Then I would be glad for you guys to spend it however you want to spend it, okay? Give it to whoever you want to give it to. So just, just respectfully making a point, all right, that I don't take this very delicately, neither do y'all. So thank you. But also for all the reasons that you listed, Councilman Cook, I agree with the end result. I think Councilman Nakane said, we agree with the end result. We just have a respectful disagreement on how we want to get there. And that's okay. It's America. We're going to, look, we're going to leave this council chambers and we're all going to respect each other still, just as much as we did before. And it's okay. That's good. That's no problem. Now, uh, Councilman Lewis, I do disagree with the analysis on the correlation between this loan slash grant and the build grant. But that's okay. We can, we can agree to disagree. That's fine. Now, I would just, you know, there is one provision, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's a provision in that contract that says that this is paid. The reason why we keep saying give it away and grant, because there's a possibility that that happens because it's my understanding if this particular company is not in a position financially to pay it back, i.e. making profit, that they don't have to pay this back. That's my understanding. Regardless, regardless, okay? If we're going to give 1.5 million dollars away, if we're going to do it, why don't we take the 1.5 million dollars and just give it to our own businesses? We, how about, let's start, how about this? Let's start with the 60% of the businesses in this wonderful parish. And if you want to keep it, because this is a city council, if you want to keep it to the businesses within the city limits of Lafayette, let's divide it up and just give it away to our own individuals, if, if we're going to give money away. That's just one recommendation. All right. Less pay, Sidra, do we know the value of the less paid motel? It's my understanding we don't know the value. We do not know the value of the less paid mo. Between how much? Between 4 and 700,000 dollars. It was on the market, correct me if I'm wrong, what, a half a million not too long ago? Okay. Um, if we're going to spend 1.5, because you're making great points about this is an eyesore university corridor. We want to clean it up. We want to encourage investment, discourage disinvestment. I am on board with that. Why don't we, on behalf of the wonderful city residents of Lafayette, buy the less paid motel and demolish the thing? And then at least our people own property and we're not just giving it away. We're creating a very, very, very slippery slope in this process. And, and look, I've met with the developers. I understand. They understand where I stand and it's all good and we're all respectful of each other. But this is not capitalism. This is not how the market works. The governor gives this money. The state gives this money. The city gives this money. APC gives this money to this one. What other entity out there? What other develop, you're in construction, Councilman. What other, are there any other, is this a business model to other, there's not, it's, so this is a rare, it's, okay, I don't support that. And I don't think you should either. I say that with respect. I echo the position and the analysis, analysis given by Councilman Nakane. Again, ladies and gentlemen, I respect you. If you disagree with me, it's okay. It's all right. We're going to get through this. We're going to work together. And, and I encourage the dialogue. So thank you for considering our position. Yeah, yes, we read through it. Yes.
It's, it's not your term, it's not, Mr. Nakane.
I think, I believe the council understands my position. Thank, thank you. Thank you.
He can ask you a question. Go ahead. He asked you a question. Go ahead.
Sure.
Regarding the contract and the less paid, will it get torn down?
Can you say it again? I, I didn't hear you, Councilman.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Nakane.
I, I didn't hear you.
The, the contract that, in regards to the bottle lofts with the private developer and the money being given to them and their investment is somewhere in the neighborhood of 38 million total, it looks like. They have 32 million. The state has 35. They have 35 million? State has five, that's 40. So we're talking almost 42 million dollars going into this development. Total 35. That's what I was saying. Okay. That's what I was saying. In this contract, where does it say that the less paid will be torn down? Is that in there?
I do not recall that provision. Councilwoman Cook may understand. She's not in.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's part of the project. That is part of the, that was part of the deal to make this happen. They were, they had to tear down the less paid motel. So yes, that is part of the, the project.
And that's guaranteed.
Yeah, we can go watch it together.
Shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready.
Well, but it's also my understanding that if, if we use the one and a half million, we could buy it and possibly demolish it ourselves and then our people would own it. I mean, if we're going to spend the money. If we're going to spend the money. It's just an option.
But we've done nothing to improve the area other than knocking it down.
We would disagree if you demolished that less paid motel.
Yes, indeed.
Well, if this company does build this and not, not turn a profit, we probably still won't get any taxes off.
But they, but they are, yes, they will, whoever they, the supplier, the purchasing material will be getting sales tax dollars.
But it's not to say that somebody else won't come in. But anyway.
Okay, sure. Ms. Abir.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to call Lori Toops to come down because we, uh, so come on down, Lori. So I, so I was one of the ones that supported this in December, but for me, why I'm choosing to change my decision as of now is that those were such different times in December. 2019, you would have never, I mean, 2020 was supposed to be my year. And look at it so far. I haven't left my house in a month. But, uh, we, sales taxes were at a record high. COVID was not on our map. Oil was doing good. So we, I voted with thinking we're fine. This is a great project. I still believe that this is a great project. It's still needed. And I don't think anyone's saying that this is not a needed project. We don't need it. My big concern is between the raises that everyone so desperately said we needed last year and, and I agree, we, people need to be paid more. And that's why eventually I supported it, even though I, I didn't, time and time again, finally did it. Police and fire raises because we're not even keeping up with the average in our state as far as paying our, the people who are protecting the service every day. So already coming into 2020, we knew running for office that we were coming into a very difficult budget. The deficit's there. We know it's there. But then now between COVID, the dip, the 40%, I think it is, the dip in sales tax revenue that we're already coming into, I'm, I'm terrified. But, and then oil on top of that, what we've seen the last eight, last day and a half. We're in for incredibly difficult budget year this year. A lot of very hard cuts are going to have to be made on each of our districts. I know I'm going to see cuts in my district that I don't want to see. I think we all are going to see a lot of cuts. So this is just going to be the first, in my opinion, the first of many difficult decisions and unpopular decisions we're going to have to make. Lori, I brought you back up here. You and I had a conversation today about where this money is coming from. And my point, my call to you, my specific question was, can this money be moved, this 1.5 million dollars that is currently being used in the university corridor? Could it eventually be moved if whether one of us did it, the mayor chose to do it, whoever brought it to the council, can that money be moved to the general fund?
It can be moved back to the city general fund by the council. The, the mayor president cannot do it without you. What would have to be done is, right now you have in front of you a budget amendment where we, in the past, we took city general fund money and we put it at several other places. The budget amendment you have in front of you takes it from those other places, moves it back to the city general fund, and from the city general fund, it moves it to the bottle art lofts. What you would have to do is we would have to come back to you with a very similar budget amendment, just take that last step off. And the money would end up in, it, original city general fund money would end up back in the city general fund. None of the, you can choose what you wanted to do with those capital projects, whether you wanted to leave them as they are. Or if we're not using that University Avenue corridor money, you could cut those projects. I think most of, some of those projects might be under the way. I think the golf, not the golf, the, the, uh, fire engine, I think was, uh, is, is, there's a contract on that. So you would just leave everything else as it is on that budget amendment in front of you, just not move the money to bottle art lofts. And it would return back to the city general fund. So it can be done by your action, not by administration.
Right. But some, but who would bring it to the council? It'd either be a council member who, so say this, say this passed. It then moves on and this project happens.
If, if this passes and it moves on and the project happens, they do have to draw up formal loan documents and, and that hasn't been drawn up. So, um, you know, we haven't seen formal loan documents, which would definitely occur before we would be able to write any check to bottle art lofts.
Okay. And then say it did not pass, the money then, uh, so I'm trying to.
If it, if it did not pass, then that money y'all took from city general fund a long time ago, you can tell that I'm Italian. I've got to talk with my hands, right? So the money that you took from city general fund a long time ago and put in these other places, if you don't move it back, they would stay in those other places. Or, or you could move it back.
Okay, perfect. And that could be done by council or administration. Can, can administration put it on the agenda for us to vote on?
Yes, the administration could put it on the agenda, uh, in, in a budget amendment, in a mid-year budget amendment, in, uh, whatever we, we have to do for the COVID. Uh, certainly we're going to be coming to you with some stuff. So it could be done by us.
So are the, it could be done by council or it can be done by administration? That's the point I was trying to make. Okay, thank you.
A council member could ask my assistance and I help often, whether I agree with your transactions or not. That's not my job. My job is to facilitate what you want to get done. So I will help whoever wanted me to help them with any, anything.
Great. All right. Perfect, Lori. Thank you. Answered my question. And again, this, I agree, this is a, a, an area of town that does need help. It is an eyesore. It has been for years. But in the times that we are in today, unfortunately, going into this budget session, we all need to start thinking about the unpopular cuts that we're going to have to make. And I know I'm going to regret saying this because I'm sure I'm going to be really upset when I have to cut something meaningful for my district, so I won't be as generous. But unfortunately, we're all going to have to do that. This is the first step in a very tough conversation we're about to have regarding budget. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Nakane.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Toops. So this, this money did actually come out of the general fund?
Oh, yes. If, if it wouldn't have originated in the city general fund, we would not be talking about this today.
So it wasn't necessary on a university corridor, docket, or any funds from there?
No, no. Well, what they do, what, what this amendment does, it takes the university corridor money, funds all that other stuff that was previously funded with city general fund of projects. Projects, because that's all that could be used for.
Is there a possibility of coming up with these funds from another source?
The absolute only source is the city general fund because all the other funds are, are, they are in a different fund because it's dedicated money. And that's why.
That's including create and everything else?
Yes, sir. And, and I mean, unless you got a legal opinion saying create money was available for this, but that would take some time.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Toops.
There, there may be, there's some old economic development TIF money from one of the TIFs that's no longer existent. You probably the only one who remembers that money, uh, because it, There, there may be, there's some old economic development TIF money from one of the TIFs that's no longer existent, you probably the only one who remembers that money, because it was, had not been collected since you left last office. That's about 600,000, but I don't know which we'd have to pay for a legal opinion to see if we could use that money.
Mr. Lazar.
I don't think we should look at this in a vacuum, I think we need to look at the big picture and what it means for that area of town. We've had disinvestment in that area and constant deterioration going back to when the underpass was constructed. And there have really been no meaningful development in that area since that time. There have been constant, constant deterioration, if you will. So, when we look at the big picture, this has the potential to be a catalyst for, well, not the potential, it will be. I think part of the reason why a lot of development hasn't occurred there is because of the eyesore. Because of the eyesore, because of the crime rate, which spills over in all directions as we know. So, I think this is a golden opportunity, I realize the problems that we are about to face with the budget. Think we all do. But at the same time, we shouldn't just put everything on hold, if you will. I don't know when we'll ever get the opportunity again to, to do something in this area. I think it's a small investment for the potential benefits across the board. So, I would certainly encourage that we support it for those reasons, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazar, Ms. Cook.
Okay, I just, I kinda wanna clear something up, Mayor President, when you said that it was like a, this is kinda like a giveaway, that we're, you know, we're just, we're giving the money to this group, but it's not really a giveaway, because we're getting something back. You know, we're not throwing 1.5 to them just to say, here, you know, here's some money from the city and, and we're getting a, we're getting a project back. So, you know, the analogy of just going to buy the property, you know, the less pay motel ourselves, and, and, okay, we own it, but we're not, we're not getting anything back from that investment. So, I guess I look at this, I'm still looking at this as a, as an investment into the community, in this, this community, but in our entire community with the ripple effect of some of the things that will happen as a result of the construction projects and those things. So, that, that was my, my point on that, but I do have a question, Lori, for you. Okay, this money that is coming from, it's, it's general fund money that was put into capital improvement projects, and we're pulling out for this particular issue 1.5 million. What other funds are there that, you know, how much, I don't know if you know this right off the top of your head, but, you know, is, can you give me a number as well if there are other, you know, types of money that could be put back in the general fund for these kind of projects?
No, I don't think any money could be, this is the only money that could be back, put back in the general fund.
I thought you said there were other projects that general fund money was put into different projects, I mean, I know for one.
And we're, this is taking it out.
Right.
That, that's, I think it's three different funds that is involved in this budget amendment, and it's several different projects. So, it was put there and then we're taking it back.
Exactly, exactly.
But that's the only ones that I'm aware of.
That was what I was wondering, if it was any other, any other money, so this is basically just this, just this amount of money, there's no other money that we could be using for this?
Other than that economic development TIF money, which, you know, I was told it would take too long to figure that out at the time, whenever, whenever they were working on that.
I mean, is there any way that we can look into that, that might be some money that, you know, we need to not leave off the table?
I can certainly talk to legal about it, it, I don't know how that would affect this budget amendment.
No, I mean, I, and again, I, I'm not really, I guess my question is just, okay, if we're looking for money to be in the general fund, what other, you know, what other sources that maybe came from the general fund that was put into other projects that we could draw back to the general fund?
Anything that was put somewhere else was already spent, so we went scraping to see wasn't spent, and I'm getting, my memory is coming back to me, on that economic development TIF money, they had to set up a whole board that had never been previously set up. They had to get the legal opinion and see if it could be done, then they had to go through all the motions and set up a board, and it would have taken several months to try to clear that money. So, that was determined that it was not viable for this project.
Okay, I guess my, I don't know who to address this one to, if there's not, legal is not here, but what, you know, what are the legal ramifications of, of this? I mean, we, we entered into agreement with these bottle lofts, this development, and now we are stepping away from it, and there's money involved with it, so I guess I'm just concerned, you know, what, what's our legal issue on that, or what, you know, what? Greg is here?
Paul is in the large conference room, he could hear us, so he may can come in.
So, so Lori, I have a question for you, so, right now, as we speak, the money that we're talking about only could come from the university corridor project.
No, it could come from anywhere.
No, 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 I'm talking about to move this project, that 1.5 million dollar put back into the general fund.
No. There was a large amount of money in the University Avenue corridor, so that's what they earmarked, because they thought they could loan that money. Then they found out they couldn't loan it. So, what we did is we took money from the University Avenue corridor, funded that fire engine with that money, and then returned the fire engine money back to the city general fund, because it was originally city general fund.
So, what we're talking about, to put it all in one nutshell, this money is from university corridor? Because what you said a few minutes ago about the fire station, the fire truck, you needed some funds, and the fund come from university corridor?
No, the money is from the city general fund, it's city general fund money.
Okay.
That's the original source of the money, is city general fund.
Okay, did they have money for that?
I, I don't.
Well, what I'm saying is you talked about to replace the, the general fund you're using, what, explain that again.
They took money out of the city general fund and put it to buy a fire engine.
Okay, right.
Well, because it's city general fund money and y'all wanna loan that to somebody else, I'm taking that money for the fire engine, putting it back in the city general fund. In any capital project at all, in the capital project list, you could take and reduce that and fund the fire engine.
Correct.
What we did in this budget amendment was reduce the University Avenue corridor money, because that was a big project. But you could have prioritized and reduced any other capital project in order to fund that fire engine.
But we reduce university corridor to fund that fire engine?
That's what we're using in, that's what we're using in that budget amendment that you have before you.
Right.
It's not mandated that you use that.
Exactly, but it's coming from university corridor.
To replace the funding on the, on those projects.
To replace it, that's what we do, using university corridor to replace that fire engine.
Yes.
In the general fund.
In the, well.
Well, I mean, that's what it is.
No, it's not in the general fund.
What is it?
It's in the capital project fund.
Okay, well, capital project fund, but it's coming from the university corridor project.
It's being replaced by money from the University Avenue corridor money.
Right, right, right. That's how it's being replaced.
That, that's what's in that budget amendment, that's what I understood you wanted me to do.
Well, to make sure it happens.
Yeah.
Okay, who are we waiting for?
Is Greg coming?
Oh, Greg's behind, he's.
Oh, okay. Does he need to raise his right hand?
I got a question for you.
You have to raise up your right hand.
Come on down.
Do I need to move, am I like?
Oh, I can put the mic, I can put the mic hot right here.
Stay close.
I sterilized this already, you know?
Okay, you, you're hot, go ahead.
You need to identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Gregory Logan.
I, I just had a question about what, you know, what are our legal, you know, cover, do we have any as far as, are we gonna be sued if we pull out of this project, or what are we looking at?
I understand the original contract was contingent on the council moving the money around to fund it tonight, so there is a contingency in that early agreement, so the Lafayette Consolidated government has no liability. So, there was a safeguard put in place.
Okay, I, I did hear that, I just wanted to hear you say that, yeah. But TIF money, we talked about the TIF money, we can't use, what I'm understanding too about that is, it can't be used unless it's in that TIF district, is that how you understand TIF money?
I would have to look into that and get back to you, I have not looked at that issue at all.
I had gotten a previous legal opinion on that, I'm sorry to say that the attorney had, that wrote that opinion passed, so, somebody in order to validate that would have to redo the work on, you know, or at least reread the opinion.
I mean, that's what I was told, and it, I mean, it makes sense, that the TIF money was collected in that district, it has to stay in that district, which is not, doesn't involve this, so.
That's what I understood too, it has to stay in that district.
I just, my question would be if an ordinance would be able to change that, but you can follow up on that one.
We'll look at the opinion and update it, how's that?
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, I mean, at this point, we not, that wouldn't happen, because we need to make a decision on this, because there is a deadline, so I just, I just wanted to hear your, you know, opinion on, on what kind of legal ramifications might be available or possible, and, and I understand that there was that clause in there, so, we're probably okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nocken.
Mr. Logan, I'm glad you're here, and Ms. Toops, did y'all see the contract on this bottle lofts and the less pay motel? Is it guaranteed to be torn down? Has anybody seen, nobody's answered that question yet for me. I mean, we're giving, these people have 35 million in building, how big, how many units is it, 22 units? 45 units, and we got 35 million, that's about, what, 800,000 a unit?
So, I, I can tell you.
800 square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the budget amendment authorizes the payment, it doesn't mean I'm gonna make the payment, I am not gonna make the payment unless we have adequate documentation, and our attorney in this case tells me I have adequate documentation. So, that, you know, just 'cause you authorize it, doesn't mean I'm going back to the office tomorrow and write a check. And if that's part of the agreement, it would have to be in the document, it would have to be in the paperwork.
So, we can verify all this as far as for the documentation regarding the less pay and everything, my calculations come about to 778,000 dollars per unit, 800 square feet. That's 972 dollars a square foot, that's pretty nice apartments.
Yes, Ms. Cook, you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Andy that from all indications from both the NPO and the planning department, that the less pay motel had to be demolished before any, the project could move forward. So, you know, to me, that's enough verification, you know, basically, those two entities can document that it is, would not, the project could not move forward without the less pay motel being demolished, so, so, it's coming down. If, if the project happens, it's, it is coming, the first thing that they do, they're knocking it down. So, that, I mean, to answer your question, if, I feel like you're worried about that, that not happening, but I think that is.
I think that's very important.
Well, I do too.
That's probably the most important.
Well, and that's why I want to tell you.
And the developer is holding, he's the first speaker.
Yeah, the developer like to speak on this as well.
Oh, okay.
Can you, can you? Sure, go ahead, yeah.
Department, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be brief, Mr. Logan, is, do you recall, is there a provision, if you don't recall, it's okay, but is, is there a provision in the contract that says that the developer doesn't have to pay back if they're not profitable, or if there's not a profit? Do you recall seeing a provision to that regarding?
I've actually never dealt with this assignment, it was an assistant city attorney who handled it, so, it was assigned to someone else.
Let's, let's.
Sure, yes, please, Councilman, thank you.
So, I asked the same question to the developer whenever they came in in December, and he says they do not have to start paying the city back until they are profitable, so.
If they're never profitable, that they, just by that definition, wouldn't have to pay back the money that we give them?
That's an assumption, yes.
So, under those assumed facts, was it fair to say that then it would be analogous to a grant? Under those assumed facts?
I answered your question, so, I'm done.
Let me put the contract on.
Chair, if I still have the, Mr. Logan, assuming the facts that Councilwoman Ebert just mentioned, and I'll assume those facts, hypothetical facts to be factual, would that be analogous to, if they don't have to pay it back, would that be analogous to a grant? Meaning, they don't have to pay the money, okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Veronica, can you please call the contract, please?
Okay, and we do have six speakers, so if we start in with the speakers, we have six speakers, the first of which is Josh Collin, he's the HRI owner developer. Mr. Collin? He's been on hold, Mr. Collin? Josh? And I think he's dealing with a delay on his side. Hello? What I'll do is go move to the next speaker, and then we can call him back after this speaker.
Yes, I'm ready.
You can go ahead.
Great, can folks hear me?
Yeah, you can go in ahead and talk, Mr. Collin.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, you'll have to.
Yeah, I'm Josh Collin.
Mr. Collin, you'll have to turn down your side, because it's gonna interfere with your comments.
I did that.
Thank you.
Great. All right, I'm Josh Collin, president of HRI Communities, really appreciate everybody taking so much time tonight to discuss this development and the loan. Just wanna make sure everyone, everyone can hear me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. First, let me say there's been quite a bit of confusion tonight, I'd like to kinda take these bit by bit and address them. The first item is that, you know, this is not a unique type of development, it is a little bit more complex and has a little bit more involved than is typical. Um, really appreciate everybody taking so much time tonight to discuss this development.
Mr. Collin?
Yes, I, I guess there must be a, a big lag, so.
Yeah, there is.
Wasn't sure, folks, okay, let me, let me try this again, I'm sorry. So, the company I work for, HRI, is a New Orleans-based company, been around 35 years, we specialize in adaptive reuse of historic structures, and we do a work in public-private partnership. This cut, this type of development is nothing new to us, it is typical of what we do, and we do these things very much in partnership with city, state, and federal governments. I am very, I guess, concerned by the, some of the comments that the mayor made tonight, because I did not know he had any opposition to this development when, when we met on December 30th. He actually said he wouldn't do anything to unravel the, the project that the former administration put in place. I realize that there are a number of things that have happened since, and obviously, the crisis of COVID-19 makes any expenditures by anyone that much more difficult. However, this particular development is not only shovel-ready, it is sledgehammer-ready. We, our first step after closing is to demolish the less pay property. We have pulled our building permit and have approved plans by the city of Lafayette. Those plans actually require the demolition of the less pay. Those plans actually require the demolition of the less pay to create the particular property that is the Bottle Art Loss through a recorded plat. So that is certainly part of it. We have a draft mortgage note and guarantee that has been circulated between our council and Ousmane Marino, who is representing the city. We can certainly add, certainly add language to that, those loan agreements requiring as part of the loan, the demolition of the less pay motel. That is not an issue. We, we certainly, you know, know how difficult it is to get projects as complicated as this fully approved and, and going. And now is the perfect time to move forward on a deal that is teed up. You will have extreme difficulty moving economic development projects forward in this atmosphere into the next foreseeable future following this, following this crisis. This is one where $5 million of state money and other incentives really, and, and private loans and equity investments from JP Morgan Chase and Iberia fuel this project. This development is a $16 million project that creates 40 units. To do that, we have to acquire really the whole block and demolish the less pay. The $30 million overall development being referenced would add in a second phase at a later date, subject to more award of state funding. So that, to answer Councilmember Nakken's kind of math question there, would be a total of 105 units created by a $30 million investment, but that is, different math for a different day. We are set to move forward, have a closing scheduled for May 12th, have every single legal document produced for this development, a guaranteed maximum price contract in place, and all the approvals. Everyone is, everyone is ready to close based on a longstanding commitment. My understanding is tonight was a clerical administrative exercise and that our loan was not even in question. So this whole, this whole thing puts us, and the state, and Iberia, and Chase, and the architects, and the subcontractors, and everyone that's dependent on this, trying to afford in a terrible place with over a million dollars of expenditures, not to mention the community, and I believe some community members are also willing to, to call in and speak to this, what we have seen from our previous developments that are like this is massive amounts of investment, follow-on investment all around our artist communities. This development not only has housing in it, but it has gallery space and common workspace. The vibrancy that is going to be created by this development at this intersection is going to be a game changer for that neighborhood. It has worked time and time and time again, and anyone that's in doubt, I can show them very much what the before and after is going to look like for this development based on precedence. So please, please, I, I am absolutely begging the city to follow through on its commitments to help this neighborhood to provide a loan that is going to have a secured mortgage against the property. If this project fails to pay back this loan in the time that we have to pay it back, the city will be able to take the property. This is not a gift. I guess I've spoken enough and there's a lag, so I'll, I'll pause and, and let you guys ask questions, but thank you so much.
Can you, Josh, can you repeat that last statement, please?
This is a loan that will be secured by a mortgage on the property. The property is collateral for this loan. We have a guarantee to complete the project. There will be an operating development. Part of what, the reason why we need so much time, why the loan is so long-term, is that the affordability requirements with the other funds, the state $5 million that has been provided, it's federal dollars the state is providing, they could put this money in any community in Louisiana. They're putting these $5 million federal dollars in Lafayette because of how impactful this project is going to be and because the city had committed a million and a half dollars on multiple occasions.
Okay, Mayor President, I'd like to ask you a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Josh, I have a question. You mentioned a mortgage. What position are we in? Are we, are we the first mortgage? Are we the second mortgage? Or do we are the third mortgage holder?
You're the third mortgage holder consistent with the ordinance that was passed by the city council last year when we moved forward the project.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other question for Mr., the developer, Mr. Josh Collins, by the council? Okay, thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the next comment from the public. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to call the next speaker, Stephanie Dugan. Hello, Stephanie? You can begin speaking on the item of the bottle loss.
Yes.
You can go, go ahead with your comments.
Am I speaking now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. The council voted unanimously to buy the less pay hotel, and that was reported by the advocate in October of 2014. It was linked to the trade of the old federal courthouse and LPTFA was in the deal, and then it was severed, and it went forward on its own. That was 2014. And, let's see, in, no, June, I'm sorry, June of 2015, it says, "Today, the Four Corners is best known for the less pay motel, drug deals, prostitution, and other crimes." You asked the neighborhood to step up and report crime and do something about it, and we did. About, in 2016, KLFY reported just that the residents said, "Just do what you got to do and work with it. Try and show some effort or something. Get rid of that eyesore. Don't just talk about it." That was in 2016. There's been a commitment that was made last year, and the HRI has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. For three years, the community has, has submitted letters and support, and we've called people. We've gone about everything that we could possibly do to get a bill grant, but it requires buy-in from the city government. The functions of the city government are still operating, and you said you're eager to see them function, and this is one way to do this. The return on investment, if we get the bill grant, and we stand in a very good position to do that with Representative Higgins, the return on investment is over $40 million over 40 years. I'm sorry, $240 million over 40 years. We chose HRI because of their reputation. It is absolutely sterling. They have done development after development in the city of New Orleans, and we saw this development. We, we introduced them to our neighbors, we had several conversations, we had several meetings, and we decided that they were the best. This is a negotiable instrument that the city is receiving, and it is, if you reach back and think about negotiable instruments in law school, the city of Lafayette could actually sell this negotiable instrument to a third party. It's not giving us a grant. There is a secure position with this. Immediately, we're going to be getting 300, over 300 construction jobs in this city. HRI and its contractors and subcontractors, contractors will purchase materials, they're going to rent equipment. The people that are working on the project will need to eat somewhere. They need, they need to pay rent, and they need housing for some of them. And some of them will be purchasing things at, say, for instance, Walmart. They will have children going to school. They will have a tremendous impact on our economy. Way back when, I understand that the market value of the less pay, that it was actually for sale for $750,000. I believe that the price that they were negotiating for in 2014 was actually significantly higher. So in some respects, you're getting a bargain at 750, and I don't know how much they're actually being paid. There is other plans to get investment into the area. For instance, we lost a grocery store, and I'll, I'll say grocery store, but everyone knows that we could do better. So we have plans to go forth, and we've already started to try and incentivize another grocery store to open up there. We have manufacturing plants that have discussed coming to us. We're in an opportunity zone. We're in a cultural district where we've gotten historic tax credits for the building. We've gone through all of these steps to make sure that we were in the right position, and we were. It is a commitment of the city of Lafayette. It's been voted on, it's been signed, it's delivered.
Ms. Dugan, your time has ended.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Ms. Dugan, she's still there?
Oh, no.
That's okay.
Next speaker is Monique Boulay.
Hello, and thank you for taking my call and for my comments tonight. My name is Monique Boulay, and I am the CEO of the Acadiana Planning Commission. At our first quarter meeting of the Acadiana Planning Commission, including the parish presidents of Acadia Parish, Evangelion, Iberia, Lafayette, St. Landry, St. Martin, and Vermillion Parishes, we presented what I call the less pay motel project, better known as the bottle loss project, to the regional leaders. A regional investment in the revitalization of Lafayette's university corridor would help lead the way in Acadiana as we tackle our most disinvested areas in the region. Understanding the real challenge of tackling blight, they also discussed the importance of local participation in a project like this. They all face very similar challenges and know how hard it is. That day, the regional board voted to make the first-of-its-kind regional investment in a local project. When the less pay motel project closes on May 12th, in three weeks, the APC will put $500,000 in escrow to help cash flow the immediate demolition of the less pay motel and pave the way for the bottle arts project to begin. With this kind of blight, it is never fair to expect the private sector to do it by themselves. I had a conversation with one of our local developers about doing this and about what it would take, and I asked him straight up, and he has done significant developments throughout Lafayette for many, many years. And he basically said to me, "The city would need to buy several blocks to secure the property values. It's, it's too much of a risk to take on without government assistance. It's too much to expect the private sector, to say, 'Private sector, do it by yourself. We're not helping.'" So you make the choice. Do you want to keep the blight for another 20 years or 40 years, you know, or do you want to work with somebody who really knows how to get into these projects and, and make them worthwhile and create jobs and change the environment? So in this time of COVID, of the COVID-19 crisis, this project will bring an immediate 300 construction jobs, 40 affordable housing units with the potential of an additional 60, tax payments that don't exist today, $5 million from, from the state, $500,000 from the region. And, you know, with this relatively small loan, you bring 300 jobs to Lafayette, affordable housing to your most impacted citizens in this crisis, new tax revenues, and, and also hope and positive actions that need, it's a signal to our community that we will keep moving in this very difficult time. You will also help lead the way to show Acadiana what real revitalization looks like. We really don't execute that many projects like this. We really haven't, and it's a great opportunity to really lead the way in that, in that effort. As Acadiana sees the less pay motel come down and new positive and exciting energy evolve in a forgotten part of town, I think it will signal positive growth and forward motion in a time that is, it's going to be needed the most. Can a single construction project in recovery have such an impact? I'm going to say yes, and I'm going to remind everybody what rebuilding of the Superdome did for New Orleans after Katrina. It's a critical signal to, to our citizens that the city is not going to stop moving forward. I think you have that opportunity to be, be part of such a positive signal in our, our difficult times ahead, in addition to providing many of our suffering citizens affordable housing and immediate construction jobs and new tax revenues. While times will be tough in Lafayette and in Acadiana, forward motion is still possible and, and supported. I thank you, I ask you to vote yes on this ordinance and to send a forward-moving signal in some of our most difficult times. Thank you and know that we are here to support you as we all build a recovery moving forward.
Monique, I have a question.
Yes.
My question is, with that loan of $1.5 million, you're saying that the state will give us $5 million?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How, how do you derive the $5 million from the state?
Oh, the state. The state has committed $5 million to this project.
Okay.
Um.
So, so, so the state has committed to $5 million for this particular project?
Correct.
Okay.
The CBDD money that they are putting in this project. And I will say, we really had to push hard with the state because for the last several years, all of this, all of these funds, tens of millions of dollars have gone only to New Orleans. And so to get in there and, and get some money for Lafayette, it was a big fight. It is our money, and, and the mayor president is absolutely correct. We pay those taxes, but we really never see those taxes come back at us. And so it is an opportunity to get our money back here in Lafayette rather than in other parts of the state.
Okay, so without this project, there's no $5 million from federal funding, from the state?
Um, I don't know. I know there was talk of, of needing the local participation. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know the exact parameters around that, but I know they were looking for that formula with local participation. That is one of the reasons the APC stepped up as well.
Okay. Thank you, Monique. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Greg Dugan. Mr. Dugan, you could begin speaking.
Good evening, everyone. I want to follow up a little bit on the State Bond Commission hearing. Number one, HRI was praised by the Bond Commission unanimously for the work that they were doing, and they were praised for the low cost of the project per square foot that they were providing. So I think that some of the figures that we're using are not exactly correct. But one of the things that they did praise highly was the fact that the city was cooperating with the state and stepping up to help fund these projects, and that was one of the things that they were very excited about, and they voted unanimously to go forward with the project, where they rejected others. And that's all I wanted to follow up on. Thank you very much.
Next speaker? Next speaker is Wallace Senegal. Mr. Senegal, you may begin speaking.
Yes, good evening, council. I appreciate everything that you all done for the University Carter, because the University Carter been on the project for many, many, many years. You know, we have a lot of issues to go on, and as a citizen of District One, I feel we should keep going forward with the University Carter. You know, we didn't put money in a lot of other projects that didn't really benefit university, and university is the man's street just about to get to the university, UL, Lafayette, you know? So, we lost a lot of money on the horse farm. Nobody never brought up anything about the money with the horse farm. Ms. Cook, I thank you for your visions for the jobs that's going to come to that project. You know, Councilman Chair Pat Lewis, I thank you for making sure that the University Carter is being adequately constructed to beautify the city of Lafayette. We have a quality of life also in District One. Thank you, guys. Appreciate everything you all doing.
Next speaker? William Tealy. Mr. Tealy, you may begin speaking.
Hi, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is William Tealy. I live in City District Number Two. Councilman Andy Nocken represents me, and I would like to encourage everyone on the council to vote in favor of this $1.5 million loan to build these lofts. The North Side, and more specifically, Four Corners, is an area of town that hasn't seen investment in a very long time, possibly my lifetime. And the Less Pay Motel represents the worst of the worst blight on this part of town. This is a $1.5 million loan. It's not an expenditure, it's a loan, and it will remove this blight from that part of town. That's a bargain. Some people may argue that because of the pandemic, we shouldn't make this loan. But I would argue that in these tough times, this is exactly the time we need to invest in our community. You know, it's FDR's New Deal that got us out of the Great Depression. Government offering up a little bit of seed money to private companies to create jobs, purchase supplies that costs sales tax, you know, put people in these lofts that pay property taxes, that is going to invest in our community. Now, some people may argue that this doesn't, this project doesn't help people that live in other parts of the city. And I would argue that the citizens on the North Side have put money in the city general fund in their tax dollars, and they deserve to see a project that will benefit their side of town. They are city citizens like any city citizen. Any development on University Avenue can act as a catalyst. Once this project happens, all their private developers will come with their own development with no government interaction. We just need someone to start. Failure to do so, failure to do this, will leave the Less Pay Motel there, that blight there, for possibly decades to come, just like the old federal courthouse with blight in the downtown of Lafayette for decades. I would like to finish on this note. Some council members have stated whether or not we will see the loan repaid in 40 years. Well, I would like to flip their argument on them and ask, what will Four Corners look like in 40 years? What will the North Side look like in 40 years? You know, I'm only 33 years old, so I hope, I hope to make it to 73. I hope to see in 40 years what this side of town looks like. I would like to thank everybody for their time, and I'd like to thank the mayor president. Even though I don't agree with him on this issue, I would like to thank him and his administration for their effort battling the COVID-19 virus. They are doing a terrific job doing that, so thank you. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we had 17 citizens who wrote in who did not wish to speak. All are in support of the ordinance. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. I just have this comment and I'll give the floor to Mr. Nocken, that why would we pass up an opportunity like this? $5 million from the state, $500,000 from APC, the entire region supported this. The entire region. $1.5 million from LCG for a $30 million project. Mr. Nocken.
I really appreciate the discussion we've had, and it's given me a lot of time and thought about the project. And Mayor President Gilery and I, and I'm sure everyone else in here and in this room agree, it needs to be done. There's no doubt about it. The source of the money is always painstaking, and the fact that we probably never will see the money back as a loan is painstaking, because we're giving away everybody's money. It's not our money. We're giving away everybody's money. There's a possibility we'll get a loan back, but we're third in line. We've got two banks in front of us. I doubt we'll see it, but then again, I won't be around to know in 45 years anyway. I've been doing some calculating. We're talking about a $35 million project. Given the fact that those are sales taxes to be collected, that's $1.55 million. That's our loan we're getting back. We're taking a blighted property, putting it back into the economy. That's a plus. My fears about the less pay, Mr. Josh Collins said he'll guarantee it in the loan. That's a plus. That's got to be done. So, there's a lot of positives here. And as much as I'm against about depleting the general budget and taking money from people and giving it to a private entity, tax dollars, it's hard to vote against this. I'm still weighing my decision, but at this point, I think it's a worthwhile project. I still have to make a bond choice now before we get to the vote, but it's, I can see there are some cost benefits, and there's some return. It may not be in the form of a loan, but it'll be in return of tax dollars, it'll be in return of economy, commerce, jobs. It's hard, it's hard to swallow, but I may have to swallow. That's a big pill.
I appreciate that, Mr. Nocken, again, the rationale behind the funds will come back through sales tax dollars, and it'd be a plus as well, because that area really needs that development. This is something that we've been working on for many years. Like Mr. Lazar said, the last time something happened major, really major in that area, was with the railroad. In fact, when I ran on, the first time when I began running for this position as District Three representative, that's what I ran on, that the last time something happened on that side of town was 30-some-year-years ago, when Wilfred Pierre was the representative. And he also shared with Lynette's dad, Mr. Simo, Dr. Simo. So, again, that area of town, once we do something with that area, the Four Corners, which, Mr. Nocken, you've been on the council before, and you realized that you guys were trying to do something, that will precede other developers to come in that area. Again, if we support this, we're looking at $5 million from the state, federal money. Federal money from the state just by approving that. So, not only the sales tax dollars, but that $5 million, plus another $500,000 from the APC. So, look at the funding that's coming in just by moving forward with this project. Look at, look at, look at that, just that we already getting our money back. In fact, they'll put $500,000 to start the project. Permits have been issued. The Bond Commission approved it. Clay Higgins supporting it. Governor supporting it. I'm supporting it, and I hope the rest of my colleagues support it. Three of us voted on that a couple of months ago. And like Ms. Cook said, there's a commitment. A commitment means a lot, a commitment. I remember I committed myself a few weeks, I mean, a few years ago, because I gave a commitment. I had mixed feelings about it, but I'm glad I did commit it myself. That means a lot, a commitment. Before I go further, Mr. Gilery, I really would like to know why you're not in support of this. Really would.
Let me start off with this. We all want to end up the same place. Councilman Nocken said that very, very well. My strong fear here is that we create a very slippery slope. Notice the business model of this particular company. And you're right, I did meet with them before, and they know exactly where I'm, where I'm, where I stand on this. If we buy into this model, we are supporting business plans and business models that are founded primarily on tax dollar money, like we're just giving you money, the state's giving you money, the federal government's giving you money, the city's giving you money, the parish is giving you money. Well, what we forget is, our people gave their hard-earned money to us, to our state, to our federal government, and it's just not a business model that I support. Look, we can agree to disagree, that's fine, that's fine, but it's a very slippery slope. Here's another thing. It's my understanding, it's my understanding that this particular project falls in an opportunity zone. Is that your understanding as well? Good deal. So, under President Trump's tax, in the previous Congress's tax reform, they created these opportunity zones. And in these, and under the Opportunity Zone Initiative, which I wholeheartedly support, I think everybody supports that, you can create a QAF, a Qualified Opportunity Fund. And if this investment is such a good investment, then I urge the developers to go find investors in the private sector to bridge that $1.5 million loan, or $1.5 million that you need. Not only would your investors get their money back, but they avoid paying capital gains in the long run if they keep their money in the Qualified Opportunity Fund enough. I support the market. As painful as it is sometimes, it's so easy to press that easy button in government, because it's not your money. Why don't you loan $1.5 million? As a matter of fact, why don't you go get a loan and put it into a Qualified Opportunity Fund if it's such a great investment? Look, I agree with the outcome. I want the outcome. I want to work with this council, and I want to work with these investors to go find areas to bridge that $1.5 million, but I'm not going to sell out my principles for the easy solution. So, that's why I don't support it. But I do appreciate the dialogue, and I respect you, either decision you make. I'm telling you, I respect you. So, thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I just want to make sure, because I know you love federal dollars. I know that, correct? You love federal dollars. So, this is the way we're getting $5 million, $5 million, federal money, if this move forward. State, federal, same thing. We're getting $5 million if this move forward, $5 million. So, we're getting our money back, plus the, like Mr. Nocken said, plus the sales tax. So, we will generate our money, plus, plus. So, in 40 years, we're looking at about $200 and some million if this move forward. So, it's not about taxpayers' money, because the people on the North Side pay sales tax as well. They do. And what do they get back? What have they received back in the last 40 years? And they pay sales tax, just like everywhere, everyone else, the formula. Their homes may not be as big, but they pay their portion of sales tax. So, all they're asking for is help to see this move forward. That's all they're asking for. Everyone else on the other side of town, and we don't want to talk about it, but they get as well, too. And sometime we'll be, sometime we might not want to give it to them, but I'm the type of person who would like to see things happen, because I represent District One, but I also represent the whole city. That's how I look at things. If my colleagues come to Pat Lewis and ask us to support something, I try my best to support it, because it's for the community. It's not for the individual, it's for the community. We all took a note that we will support our community, our district and our community. Everyone took, all six of us right here, from the mayor that support the whole entire city, not for a select group of people, the entire city. So, we asking for support, because we support the entire city of Lafayette. So, I'm, all I'm asking you guys to think about that, we will be generating more money if we pass this. In 40 years, we're going to collect, we may not be there, Liz, I'm sorry, you too. But regardless, we're looking at $240 million, $240 million if we pass this. So, whoever succeed us, we leaving them in a good position. Mr. Nocken.
What a terrible position to be in if you live near that place. I haven't grown up here in life yet. I knew very well the people that ran that mobile station there at the corner. I played pool at Joe Turk's. I ate medley on lunch at Jacob's. I danced a lot of Tobi's. I remember how vital that area used to be. It was a beautiful place, Pat Theater. How many times did I stand in line to go see The Dalmatians? How about Elvis Presley and Blue Hawaii, you know, the release there? I mean, these are days I remember well. It breaks my heart to have to give tax dollars, which people work hard for, basically without a guarantee of return. However, I'm looking at the dollars and revenue regarding the sales taxes, and it equates, one equals the other, which is a positive. But putting it back into the economy, we're doing a lot of good things for that area. I know those people in there will appreciate it. I agree with Josh. I wish other people would step forward and say, "This is a worthwhile project." There are people that have that kind of money. I certainly don't. But there are people that have that kind of money that could step forward and say, "This is a great investment. This is an opportunity zone." Is it too late to do that? Who has that answer? I have no idea, you know?
I think it is, because of the deadlines.
But, you know, this project, as much as, like I said, it's a hard pill to swallow. Amen, that's a horse pill.
Ms. Cook.
Okay, I just, you know, I want to make, make it clear that this is not an easy decision. You said you can make the easy decision. This is not an easy decision, because I understand both sides of it. I agree with, with what you're saying about the problem with our money moving forward, but I also look at the side of, you know, we are going to be in a situation where we need to create jobs, where we need to increase sales tax numbers, and this is an avenue to do that. We all, you know, we all pay state, we all pay money to the state for taxes, we all pay state taxes, so we're going to get a little return from the state on our taxes, tax money there. We pay city taxes, and yes, it's an investment, 1.5 million, and it's, it's our money, it's my money, too, I pay taxes, but it's also an investment in a project that will create those 300 jobs, that will, you know, increase sales tax numbers, will hopefully ripple itself into that whole area in terms of creating, you know, more development in that whole area. So, you know, I just, I guess I keep going to that. I keep thinking of, this is a time when we can maybe show some encouragement, show some positivity that, okay, look, it's bad, yes, but with a little bit of investment here, we can maybe have some bigger return so that we can move forward. And yes, we're going to have to make some other cuts. I, I'm very well aware of that, and I know that, again, in my district as well. I mean, I'm unfortunately looking at- And I know that, again, in my district as well. I mean, I'm, I'm unfortunately looking at certain project that I fought for that will probably be pulled, which I totally understand that at this point in the game. But this, because that project was maybe either not a viable project or not ready to go. The criteria that I'm looking at is this one is ready to go. We had committed to those people. They have money invested and I do see a return that can happen from this project. It is not, it's not something that we are not going to get an immediate return from. It's not some down the road. I mean, right now, we need some immediate influx of sales tax numbers, of jobs. This is going to provide that. So, you know, I, I, I really encourage you all to think about that little element of this project because I think that's an important part of this that will help maybe us come, you know, get over a little bit of a hump or a big hump, whatever we may be looking at. But, but I do feel like this, those are the positives of this project. And I think we're getting, maybe, you know, we're dwelling on the negative of the money being, being paid back and it, again, it's be committed to paying it back now. You know, maybe we won't, I'll, again, I will not see it, but, but again, those things have been put into place. So instead of dwelling on, on that, let's think of what the more immediate of positive effect it can have on our economy right now, which would be the jobs and, and sales tax increase. So, you know, and that's, you know, I guess we've said, we've talked about this enough. I know everybody has a position on it. And again, you know, I respect everyone as well, same, just like Josh, respect everyone for their own opinion. I'm just, this is how I feel about it and, and I believe it is a very good project that, that needs to be considered and moved forward. So that's all you'll hear from me.
Ms. Ebert.
Thank you. I mean, again, for kind of circling around and saying the same things and I'm going to, I'm going to do the same, I guess. I don't think anyone's denying this is a good project. No one here is saying that we don't want this done. That, we all have various reasons why we support, don't support it. But the problem is, is that we are all, we were already going, I'll repeat what I said earlier. We are already going into the year 2020 with a major deficit. And we've had two huge, I mean, two of the biggest things that could happen to a community, a pandemic and an oil crisis. And they happen back to back. So we are in first, I mean, I know three of us have been through a budget session before. We know how difficult it is. And we, we already know how difficult it's going to be even more so. The other, Andy, well, you've been through it, Councilman Nakian, you've been through it before. So you, you have an idea. Glenn, you're going to find out how difficult it is to be finding money. And my fear is that we are sitting here because we're talking about this one project saying, oh, we, we definitely need to spend this money. And I hear us talking about sales taxes, but I've been having to go through my emails to look back on my conversations with Josh and his team back last year, last August. And I don't recall, I remember that there was only the first phase, which was the apartments. And those are low income and I'm looking anywhere from, it says 30% of monthly income to rent and utilities, ranging anywhere from $562 to $800 to, I think he said $1,400. I guess my question is, is that last time he came, he was not willing to negotiate on the, the loan time, 45 years. Because that's a long time, 45 years. I'll be 80 something years old. I'm, I may not be here. Who knows? So, all jokes aside, so he wasn't willing to bend on that. He wasn't willing to bend on the amount. He wasn't willing to bend on anything of us moving up to be the first repaid. So that was disappointing, but then also for me, it's the cost, the cost, the cost. And we're saying sales taxes. We're assuming he's going to hire local. He doesn't have to. He's telling us he will, but there's nothing in the contract says he will hire local. There's nothing that says that he has to spend his monies here. He may not shop locally. He may shop somewhere else and bring it in.
But you still have to pay taxes.
Right, right. Still have to pay taxes here. All he was, all they have guaranteed to us right now are these apartments. They don't have any other plans yet. He wasn't able to show his plans. He couldn't even give me example of plans. So we're, we're making a lot of assumptions of all this money that we're going to make back. And it may not happen soon. Now may not be the time for him to break ground during this crisis. We don't know. With the oil and everything. So I just want us to be mindful of that when we're making our vote is, this is a big chunk of money we're giving up on the hopes and dreams that this is all that's going to come back to us. So just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thank you. Sales tax, it, it takes place where it is rested and it will rest at the Fookon University. So if he does use a contractor from New Iberia, New Orleans, they have to pay the city of Lafayette sales tax. So again, we'll call for the question. It's time for the question to be called. Okay, it's time to vote. Hope you guys support this. Call for the vote, please.
You ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three? District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Thanks. Senator, let's move forward, please, to the next one.
City ordinance 262020, in accordance with the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $38,107 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion and second, please. Motion by Mr. Glenn Azar, second by Ms. Lynette Cook. Any council discussion? I see none. Ms. Williams, public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote, please.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 272020, in accordance with the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year 1920 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $10,666 from the handheld ultimate light source account within the Lafayette Police Department to replace a forensic computer for crime scene.
Move by Mr. Nakian, second by Ms. Liz Ebert. Counsel discussion? I see none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote, please.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Okay, joint ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Senator, please read item number 18.
Joint ordinance 142020, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the transfer of $87,400 in community development block grant funds within the community development to Akadiana, within the Community Development Department, to Akadiana Cares Incorporated.
Motion second.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Lynette, second by Mr. Glenn Azar. Counsel discussion? Ms. Ebert.
Do we have the Director of Community Development here?
We wait on the Community Development Director to enter the room. Just be advised that Akadiana Cares Director Alton Thornton also left his cell phone number for us to call should, should you guys have questions.
My question for you, after you introduce yourself, would be how are we deciding how these funds will be spent? And is there a committee or do we have something in mind as far as how we're going to be splitting it up? Because I know it's a grant process, correct? So go ahead and introduce yourself, sorry.
I'm the County Director of Community Development. I understand you don't know this, but there is a committee of funds. Would you call for a question? Can comment, ask questions, send in, there's an application process go out and they all apply. And then there's a committee that looks at the application process, who all fits under the criteria. And then all of those who do fit under the criteria will get the full application process. And then there's a committee that looks at determining those funds.
How, how is it, how is the funding then decided? Is there a ranking system? Does everyone get the same amount of money?
Yeah, now, I'm not speaking factually, but from what I understand of that, different grants, different criteria. So some of it may be based on percentages, you know, ratios, need. A lot of them will request what they need. It'll have to fit into basically what their needs are. So it's not just randomly, they can ask for any kind of amount. It has to fit what their criteria are. If someone like Habitat Humanity that's building a house, they're the, how much do they need for that house? And there's all kinds of justifications there.
And who makes that determination of who gets what in the end?
There's a committee. I know, I'm not sure who all on that committee. I know that our grant managers, myself, we're part of that committee. But I'm not sure if there's a lot of other outside entities on that committee, but we can get that information back to you.
That's all I need to know. Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. I think I'm going to be the only one to wipe and wipe down because I don't think anybody else has done that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, let's call for the vote, please.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance 152020, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring home grant expenses within the Community Development Department to correct grant year in order to facilitate grant closeout.
Motion and second, please. Motion by Ms. Lynette Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakian. Counsel, any counsel discussion? I see none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote, please.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five? District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance 162020, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, authorizing the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell at public auction surplus vehicles, equipment and other miscellaneous movable property which are donor related for perfect, for public purposes as for the attached list auction.
Motion second. Motion by Mr. Andy Nakian, second by Ms. Lynette Cook. Counsel discussion? I see none. Ms. Williams, public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Report and/or discussion item. Senator, please read.
Discuss legal obligation to councils.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I call for this legal opinion discussion right here. After consulting with some of my colleagues and constituents, I've asked to have this item placed on the agenda. I'd like to have clarification on the legal obligation of the council. So Mr. Logan was here. Can he come up, please? Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir, Chairman Lewis.
I'd like you to introduce yourself. I want to make sure, introduce yourself.
Gregory Logan, City Parish Attorney.
Okay, thank you. Under the Home Rule Charter, who is responsible to make sure that any ordinance voted on, passed and signed into law or enforced as written?
I think that's in Section 39 of the Charter.
Yes.
The Mayor President.
The Mayor President. He is the one that is responsible. So he's the Chief Executive Office of the City of Lafayette, the Parish of Lafayette.
Correct.
And the City Parish Government shall have the following duties. This is still in 3009. See that all laws provisions of this charter and the act of the City Council and/or the Parish Council subject to the Mayor President, President's direction and supervision are faithfully executed. Am I correct and understand that correctly?
That's what it says, yes.
Can I have a little better interpretation, being that you are the City Attorney? That what I'm reading is that the Mayor President at his direction and supervision are faithfully executed. That all the act that is passed by the council.
That's what it says, yes, correct.
Under the Home Rule Charter, when the City of Lafayette is sued, who represents the City of Lafayette?
The City Parish Attorney and the Assistant City Parish Attorneys.
So the Director of the Legal Department shall be the City Parish Attorney, who shall be appointed by the Mayor President. Such appointments shall be subject to approval by a favorable vote of at least a majority of the authorized membership of each council. So the City Parish Attorney shall serve as the Chief Legal Advisor to the Mayor President, City Council, Parish Council and all department, office and agency represented by the City of Lafayette and the Parish of Lafayette. I'm just want to make sure I'm on this, I'm asking these questions to make sure that I'm clear with the Home Rule Charter and my understanding how it works. And I'm sure some of my other colleagues have some questions. I'm going to hear some of it now and then I'll come back. I don't want to take the whole floor. Like Mr. Mayor President says, his first time hearing me talk that much in the last four years. I just want to let people know I'm a talker, but I don't want to hold the whole floor. Okay? Ms. Cook?
Yeah, I just, I, that, that actually 3.9 section, the, the phrase that see, to see that all laws and provision of this charter, that particular phrase there, it acts, the City Council and/or the Parish Council, subject to the Mayor's, President's direction and supervision are faithfully executed. We're referring to any laws that have been put into place by the councils. So if we, so if there is a law that we have put in, into place, the Mayor's duty is to faithfully execute those laws. Because we make the laws and he, you know, he basically is, is there to enforce that they are executed. So I guess I'm, I'm just, but I, I guess I want to know what the clarification, clarification on this President's direction and supervision. What does that mean?
It's because we have a former governor, government where the executive branch operates the government. And they direct how each of the department works, including the legal department.
Okay. I understand that.
Okay.
But there's a gray area though. If there was a law that has been already voted on as, and is in place.
Okay.
At what point can he decide or, or the executive, you know, branch decide that I'm not going to enforce that law? I guess, so my concern is who, who represents the council? Because at some point, we, you know, apparently we have those situations where we won't agree and we respect each other. I get that and we won't always agree. But there'll be those situations. So in that particular instance, when we basically pass a law and it is on the books, it's, it's, it's been done. It's an ordinance. We've already passed it. It's gotten all the votes and it's there. At what point, when we are sued by a constituent or someone from the public, you know, who, who protects us? I mean, for instance, when, when we did, I'm fogging up again, sorry here. When we did the, when we had the charter, you know, change, when we voted on all that, basically we were actually named in the suit. And so we had the City Attorney, because we were with the City and Parish, he basically represented us in that suit.
Correct.
But if in a case where maybe the Mayor decides that he really doesn't like that charter, you know, amendment, and he doesn't want to support it, he can pull the legal from our, from us so that we are not protected. So then basically I would have to hire, I guess, my own attorney then to protect me. I mean, I'm, I'm just.
I don't think that's been done. I don't think that, that's been done. I don't know how we can sit here and say that.
Say what?
That the Mayor President can pull or pull the legal representation of a council member.
Not of a council member, but okay, I, I, the elephant in the room, the EDDs. It was basically, there was a submission done by Mike Ebert that was basically addressed the statute that was incorrect. And so he wrote a submission. It was filed. It was a $10,000, you know, legal fees were put into this particular submission. And then, and then we decided to pull it, which I guess part of my disappointment is also in our transparency that we talk about. You know, we should have been notified that that was even on the table to be pulled. You know, we, we didn't hear that from administration. We heard it from the streets that, oh, wait, do you realize they pull that? So I guess. So I guess part of my, you know, disappointment is, is in that transparency, because that was, we were not afforded that information.
First off, that's a legal strategy. The case has not been settled or resolved, the case is still there. So I can't go any further into it without going into executive session. It's policy that we don't discuss litigation in an open meeting, so.
Okay, I, I respect that, I totally understand that. I, I guess from where I'm, my complaint is just the transparency of it. That, you know, it was, you know, we were, we were in the suit, I mean, we should have been notified. It's not like you're telling somebody that's not involved with it, we were involved in it. And the fact that, you know, there was already a submission, you know, a summary judgment put into effect, spent with our, you know, our taxpayer monies, but then we, we pull it. So I guess, you know, okay, that aside, I guess this leads me to the question of who represents the councils?
I do.
But until there's an issue when someone doesn't agree with what the councils do, then who represents us?
I don't think that's happened.
Okay, let's say it does happen, hypothetically. What will we do in that situation?
Where the coun- the council is at odds with the executive branch?
I mean, it could happen, I mean, nothing personal, but I'm sure it wouldn't be the first time.
Y'all wanna go into the second session?
No, I mean, I, I'm just, I, I'm really just am looking for some clarification. And from what you're telling me is you, your legal team represents us as well.
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I just, I guess in my disappointment in the transparency of it, I guess that that would be the only thing I'm, I'm suggesting. That if you are representing us as well, that in the future, I would appreciate that if there's going to be a change in our legal representation based on something dealing with our councils, that we would be given a, you know, a little bit of information or a heads up. Is that fair, or is that?
That's fair, but there's hundreds of matters currently pending in the legal department. I think it's over eight hundred right now.
Addressing, where we're involved in it, where the city council is involved, based on an ordinance that we passed?
Certainly, Lafayette Consolidated Government, it, some of them involve um, ordinances, some involve laws. Laffi- some have not risen to the level of a lawsuit as matters, but there are hundreds of lawsuits.
I, I mean, I understand that. I guess I'm just, you know, just, you know, looking for a little verification that we have, we have an attorney.
You have an attorney.
We have an attorney, okay, well, that's, that makes me feel better. That's all I needed to know.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor President.
No, at first, uh, Councilwoman Cook had alluded to that I was not enforcing a law that was passed by this council, but I think that she got to the point of her, her real point of her question, and uh, so it's moot at this point.
Mr. Lazar.
Mr. Logan, you're saying that, and we're not getting into details to understand the nature of, you know, how this operates, of course. I have a little bit of experience with it, but anyway, uh, you're saying that withdrawing the motion for summary judgment was a legal strategy, part of the legal strategy?
It was part of an overall legal strategy, yes.
Okay, uh, I'd like to meet with you at some point in the future to discuss that, you know.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, the other thing is, following up on something that my fellow council member brought up, in terms of who represents the council? Uh, we know that on paper, the legal department represents the council. But following up on something she brought up, in the event that the council and administration has opposing viewpoints, how do we resolve that?
On a single matter basis, it has to be well defined as one legal matter. There's a provision in the charter under uh, three oh, excuse me, four oh three E. So regarding special counsel, requires a written contract for a specific purpose. But the council is not a juridical person.
I understand. Still not, still not answering my question.
Okay.
Still not answering my question. Obviously, there are gonna be times where the council's gonna disagree with the administration on, on legal issues, or a lawsuit's filed and council has a different uh, position from the administration. And, and we, even though it hasn't happened yet, we've only been here, well, it's debatable whether it's happened yet or not, you know, but in any event, uh, I, I'm very concerned. I'm just concerned matters that, that directly involve the council and ordinance that the council passes and is challenged in court. And the administration feels like, for whatever reason, that it's not something that we should, uh, that the administration should defend or that the city parish should defend. Obviously, the council in passing that particular ordinance thought it was right and appropriate. So, so you can see the the potential for conflict.
Okay, yes, sir.
So in the event that occurs and the and the administration or the legal department says, this is, we've decided not to defend this or not to fight it or whatever the case may be. And the chair of the council says, well, I think we should. The council passed it. Where does that leave us at that point?
Under the charter, that rests with the executive branch and specifically uh, section two dash oh six B prohibits the council from directing the legal. So then we have to go back, that's the most specific language in the charter of which prohibits the council from getting involved. So if the council feels strongly, then they're gonna have to go back and apply four oh three E and hire special counsel, and then the courts will bear it out.
Okay, hire special counsel. Does the administration have to approve that?
No.
So we have this situation, we're not gonna discuss whatever it is. So we have this ongoing situation and we know what it is. If the, if the council decided that uh, that we should have went on and proceeded with the summary judgment hearing?
Councilman Lazar, I'm not willing to discuss that any further except
Okay.
in private with you
Okay.
or in executive session.
Okay.
Let's go into the executive session.
All right, let's go.
You want, or y'all wanna move forward, or we going to the next session?
Can we?
You have to advertise that.
Okay, okay.
We can't do it, you have to advertise it.
Okay.
Well, i- in closing, I, I will simply say that I'm, that I'm very concerned that I'm very concerned that the administration, or the legal department, or whomever would take this action without at least uh, giving the council chair the courtesy of, of stating the council's position in the matter. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, did any council member, I just wanna lay it out there, did any council member direct Assistant City Parish Attorney Mike A. Bear to file the particular motion for summary judgment in question? Did any of you order him to do that? Neither did I, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. I just have a general question, just bear with me. Not an attorney, so just kinda pretend I, well, anyway. When someone is being sued and you have representation and your, your, your representation who happens to be an attorney and he or she decides that they do not want to represent you anymore. So how does that work? Do they contact or write something to the judge saying that my count, my, my client do not want representation? Or they just say, hey, we're not gonna represent their client anymore? Can you make me understand how that happens? How it happened? Not this particular instance, but just how it happened as being their union attorney?
How it happens in general?
Yes.
Sometimes the client asks the lawyer to withdraw and sometimes the lawyer withdraws from representing the client.
No, what I'm asking, not the client, the client is okay with his representation, with his attorney. And the attorney decides they do not want to represent them anymore. Do they just send a letter or a brief or whatever, or tell the judge that, hey, my client don't want me to represent you anymore, or they just say I'm not representing this client anymore?
There's a set of guidelines that you go through with the court in order to withdraw if the client does not want the lawyer to withdraw.
No, 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 my question is, you understand my question? Can the, can the judge, I mean, can the attorney just don't, just decide not to represent the client anymore?
Yes, only after filing a motion to withdraw and certifying that they've gone through certain procedures laid out to make sure that the client is protected.
So in other words, the, the, make sure the client is protected? That's what you're saying, right, to make sure that the client is protected?
Correct.
That's my question, they just, so in other words, the attorney has, have to make sure that his client is protected when he's withdrawn from the client, for protecting the client or represent the client.
It's typically when there's a hearing or a trial set, the lawyer can't, cannot quit on the eve of trial and leave the client.
And cannot, cannot quit. Uh, you answered my question. Mr. Lazar.
Oh, that's okay, I'm gonna pass. Thank you, I'm sorry, I forgot to cancel.
Ms. Cook?
I just have one more question, just cause I'm not a lawyer and I'm trying to understand this too. The mayor's responsibility or his duty would be to enforce the laws of the city, correct?
Not to enforce, to uphold.
Okay, to uphold. To basically recognize that they're, they're a law. So if, so if we pass an ordinance, which, you know, by, by standards is a law, his duty is to uphold that law, is that right? I mean, would that be in general, we could say that?
Yes.
So let's say we pass, you know, a law that says you can go eighty miles an hour in a school zone and he doesn't like that, which would be a, a good thing, because that would be a stupid law. But he would have the power to, once it's already in effect as a law, can he, how would he get, you know, how would he remove that?
That is a difficult scenario. It's, you know, I, I don't know how to answer that one.
Okay, so in his upholding the laws in the community, if we pass that stupid law, he would, as the mayor, have to uphold that law because it's on the books.
He would have to defend that law.
Yeah, defend, whatever, but it would be there. Okay, I, again, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand everything so that I understand, you know, who's covering who and who's representing who and, you know, that we don't pass stupid eighty mile an hour and speed limit laws, so, anyway, in school zones, so. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Mayor President?
I, I'll try to answer that. So we have three co-equal branches of governments, my understanding. Was it, nope, we don't?
No.
Oh, okay.
Executive branch and the Home Rule Charter is not co-equal with the council.
Oh, okay, all right, well, there we go. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any more council discussion? Okay, let's move forward to introductory items. I need a motion and a second for the council to introduce ordinance, item twenty one through twenty nine in global. Motion by Ms. A. Bear, second by Mr. Andy Nakane. Cindy, please read the global from twenty one through twenty nine, and we'll vote on it.
City ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, authorizing the filing of applications for grant funding which may become available to address economic hardships resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. City ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of nine thousand four hundred forty dollars and seventy-three cents received from the United States Marshal Service and appropriating within Lafayette Police Department. City ordinance thirty twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of forty thousand dollars received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, authorizing the transfer of matching funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars from Fund One O One and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department. City ordinance thirty one twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to move appropriations within the Lafayette Fire Department to complete projects for the remainder of the fiscal year and a transfer of thirty-five thousand dollars to Public Works to relocate the radio communications tower during the roof replacement project. City ordinance thirty two twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring two hundred fifty thousand dollars from Hospital Drive, Gerard Park Roundabout to New Traffic Signal, Vero Advancing Project, within the Traffic Roads and Bridges Department. City ordinance thirty three twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring one hundred thousand dollars from the Hospital Drive, Gerard Park Roundabout to Adaptive Traffic Signal Control Match Project, within the Traffic Roads and Bridges Department. City ordinance thirty four twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, authorizing the filing of an application with the Federal Transit Administration for operating and capital assistance in the amount of two million five hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars through FTA Section five three zero seven Urbanized Area Formula Funds along with the required match in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars for use within the Public Works Department Transit Division. City ordinance thirty five twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, authorizing the filing of an application with the Federal Transit Administration for capital assistance in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars through the Federal Transit Administration Section five three three nine Bus and Bus Facilities Formula allocations program for capital assistance along with the required match in the amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars for federal fiscal year of twenty twenty for use within the Public Works Department Transit Division. City ordinance thirty six twenty twenty, in honor to the Lafayette City Council, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring home investment partnerships funds totaling sixty-five thousand dollars received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Lafayette Habitat for Humanity Incorporated as well as authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a grant agreement concerning such funds and an act of conveyance conveying ownership in and to the property bearing municipal address one eleven Town Homes Drive, Lafayette, Louisiana, seven zero five zero one.
Okay, uh, any council discussion? I see none. Ms. Veronica, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
District 5?
Yes.
The motion to introduce is approved.
Okay, moving along, joint introductory ordinance. I need a motion and a second from the council to introduce ordinance items 31 through 48 in Global.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Abear, second by Mr. Andy Nakin. Cindy, please, okay, I got a motion and a second, okay, please meet, starting with 31.
Joint Ordinance 12/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Advisory Commission on Crime Prevention. Joint Ordinance 13/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Downtown Management Committee. Joint Ordinance 17/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, Chapter 72, Property Management, specifically Article 2, Management and Disposition of Adjudicated Properties, particularly Section 72-19D, Preference and Disposition of Property, and Section 72-40F, Initiation of Donation of Adjudicated Property. Joint Ordinance 18/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the High and Performing Arts Center and Frem F. Bustani Convention Center Advisory Commission. Joint Ordinance 19/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Parish Convention and Visitors Commission. Joint Ordinance 20/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the People's Safety Initiative. Joint Ordinance 21/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Economic Development Authority. Joint Ordinance 22/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Parish Valley Vermillion District. Joint Ordinance 23/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Parish Library Board of Control. Joint Ordinance 24/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Natural History Museum and Planetarium Commission. Joint Ordinance 25/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Metropolitan Expressway Commission. Joint Ordinance 26/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending and reenacting Chapter 34, Article 4, Section 34-366 of the Noise Control Code to provide for a sound level limit of 60.00 dBA in residential areas between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. for sewer treatment plant, sewer lift station, and electric substation and switchyard sound sources in the City of Lafayette and the unincorporated areas of Lafayette Parish. Joint Ordinance 27/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the transfer of $325,000 in home investment partnerships funds within the Community Development Department to Lafayette Habitat for Humanity. Joint Ordinance 28/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending Chapter 97 of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances to change the weed and noxious growth maintenance requirements, notice provisions, and fee schedule for properties within the City of Lafayette and the unincorporated parish of Lafayette. Joint Ordinance 29/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Evangeline Throughway redevelopment team. Joint Ordinance 30/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Preservation Commission. Joint Ordinance 31/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette City Parish President's Awareness Committee for Citizens with Disabilities. Joint Ordinance 32/2020, a joint ordinance to the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board.
Okay, any council discussion? Any public concern above introductory items, any public comments?
We have one citizen who did not wish to speak, who supports item number 42, which is in reference to code changes for sewer treatment plants. That concludes the comments.
Call for vote for Global?
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
The motion to introduce is approved.
Okay, I'll adjourn the regular city council meeting.